Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council of City College Station. It hereby announced, the date is June 26, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. No vote or action was taken in executive session, therefore being no further business. For executive session, we will return to our regular agenda. And I'll write the numbers in here before I forget that. Okay, we'll begin as we always do with the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Councilmember White will do the invocation, so we'll all remain standing after the pledges. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state.
White?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening in service to the people of College Station, we pause to acknowledge your presence and seek your guidance. As a council, we face important decisions this evening and in months ahead on issues dealing with city growth, development, housing, infrastructure, public safety, and how we preserve the character of our great city. These are not small matters, Lord, and we do not take them lightly. Grant us the wisdom to weigh every decision with care, the courage to ask the hard questions, and the humility to listen to those that we serve. May our debates be grounded in respect, and may our actions reflect not personal interest but the greater good of this community. We ask your blessing on our staff, our first responders, and every citizen who shares in the responsibility of building a better College Station. In your holy name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember White. Now we will proceed with the rest of our agenda, the leading up to here visitors. I think all of you that are regulars here are aware of this, but there is a speaker protocol. I do have several people speaking this evening on different agenda items, so each one of those had been guided to follow the protocol, and I will keep track of that, and we'll proceed from there. Okay, here visitors is our first next item. We have three people signed up to speak tonight, and I will take them in the order that they are presented to me. Ms. Shelby Bame is the very first one. She will be followed by Cheryl Wink.
Howdy, howdy. Did you miss me?
Oh, yeah.
Well, good evening, Shelby Bame, Midtown. And I'm here really just to say that the last time I stood here, I was feeling very hopeful that something would finally be done about Midtown, but after watching the last two council meetings, my hope as well as my neighbors' hope are slowly fading, not because of lack of ideas, but because of the lack of inefficient bureaucracy that this city supposedly needs to go through in order to get something done. So let's walk through the timeline as it currently stands. I emailed you, Mayor Nichols, in November of '24 about this issue. I spoke publicly about it in January of '25, and it wasn't until May, four months later, that a discussion finally took place. And at the rate we're going, I'm really fearful that I'm going to have to re-educate a new council about Midtown. I understand that bureaucracy takes time, and progress is often slower than I ever like it to be, but I also just watched the Texas State Legislature pass over 100-plus bills in less than six months, so I know efficiency and bureaucracy is possible. I understand that city staff are still vetting James Muir's master plan, but that can't be the only thing we do while we wait for that process to conclude, because what happens if staff or you guys decide that this plan isn't a good fit? Is it going to take another six months of me complaining and another 30% tax increase to figure out a solution? Because let's be real for a second, the solution to the Midtown situation is already a reactive one, but we still have an opportunity here to be proactive. I'm asking, in fact, I'm urging you to please be more proactive by exploring all solutions now while we have the time, because I know you can be proactive when you want to be. For example, Northgate, council formed an entire planning committee. Occupancy advocates spoke on that issue the same night that I first started this Midtown thing and got a dedicated discussion just weeks later, along with bi-weekly legislative updates. But Midtown, not only did it take it four months for us to have the discussion, but when that discussion was finally had, fellow council member and fellow council members asked to explore actionable items at the next meeting. Mayor Nichols, he shut them down. So regardless of whether James Muir's plan moves forward, Midtown still needs infrastructure and investment to help encourage commercial development. Town Lake, regardless of a Taj Mahal or not, is still going to need to be extended to Highway 6 to either make Midtown more accessible or to manage traffic. Sinage is still needed so that it is visible from the highway, and so that development still looks intentional and not just an afterthought. And impact fees, I guess we're still talking about those, but need to be reevaluated still as well. So today, I respectfully ask you guys to continue or to ask to explore more of these alternatives now in a future workshop item so that we can start identifying smaller, actionable solutions now and not nine months after Midtown is discussed again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bame. I think you recall that it has been referred to staff. We will be hearing more about it, I'm sure. Next on the agenda is Cheryl Wink, and be followed by Brian Alg.
Howdy, I'm Cheryl Wink, here to talk about Bee Creek flooding. Bee Creek, as you know, is the largest and most significant watershed in the interior of College Station. It drains the city from Highway 6 to Texas A&amp;M to parts west of Welburn, and then all the way down to Rock Prairie. Bee Creek's main tributaries converge like veins and arteries into three main arms, which then converge into one main creek, and all of that comes together right behind the oral surgery center, behind, just on the right side, east side of Highway 6. Anyway, there have been at least two capital projects along Bee Creek upstream from Emerald Forest. The Bee Creek Capital Channelization Project was a major capital project along Bee Creek west of Texas Avenue to 2018, having several phases and lasting several years. The city purchased right of way from multiple property owners starting in 2004 so that work could be completed and maintained. This upstream channel improvement changed FEMA floodplain maps. According to the city's website, the FEMA maps primarily incorporated changes to Carter's Creek and Bee Creek due to additional engineering studies in the Bee Creek Channelization Project, unquote. The project increased the rate of water flow through this improved upstream Bee Creek channel to prevent flooding. This is the Bee Creek Channel Improvement that Mayor Nichols was referring to at the last city council meeting, which he solved his and others flooding problems and eliminated and/or reduced residents' need for flood insurance. Our Bee Creek issue is incomparable to any other creek or flooding issue in the city for several reasons. The above Bee Creek Channel Improvements I just spoke about increased flow and resulted in FEMA maps being changed in 2017, like I just said, which included Emerald Forest, continued nearby development, 22 total new developments with only one working detention pond that fills up with water. Number three is the ever-growing Bee Creek now flows directly through a neighborhood where the creek has had zero maintenance for over 15 years. From the city's public information, once again, I'll quote, "College Station owns a significant amount of floodplain land within its city limits, 803.6 acres. It goes on to state, this reflects the city's commitment to floodplain management and flood mitigation, contributing to reduced flooding and flood insurance for residents." The flooding issue is currently affecting home values and sale ability in Emerald Forest. We are asking for the same consideration, understanding and help given to other College Station residents in the past. We need the city's help to solve the flooding problems, solve this flooding problem. The amount of water coming our way is increasing, coming all at once, and coming to a creek that is full of overgrowth and wild vegetation and full-grown trees that have been growing unmaintained.
Thank you, Ms. Wink. That has also been referred to city staff, and they've had the engagement on that. Mr. Brian Alg? Mr. Alg here. I know he signed up on a regular item later, so maybe this, that's where he had intended sign up, but I don't see him. Sorry?
We had two requests, one for here visitors and...
Okay. I don't see him here, so we'll move on, and he is signed up later on on an agenda item, so we'll hear from him on that agenda, but he'll miss his opportunity here. Okay, so that takes care of here visitors. We now move to the consent agenda, items 6.1 through 6.8. I do have people wishing to speak to us on 6.2, and so we'll pull that one for staff response, and then any others that anybody wants to ask questions on?
Two and seven, Mayor.
6.7, okay, and we already have 6.2 on. Anything else? Okay, Mr. Kaler, we're going to talk about item 6.2, which is presentation discussion, possible action on a contract award to Encircle Management Incorporated for citywide landscape maintenance and mowing for the amount not to exceed $1,079,052. Mr. Kaler, you have any supporting information? If not, I'll have Mr. Yancey ask his questions.
The only supporting information I have, and my name's Pete Kaler, I'm Assistant Director at Public Works, is that we, this was a request for proposal. It was scorable, and Encircle received the highest score of the six proposals, and that's all I have.
And it's recommended to us based on the lowest bid and staff evaluation of quality of service and so forth?
Yes, sir. The score was based on qualifications and experience, rates, and references, so all three of those, those different items.
And it's also the lowest bid of the six or seven firms, right?
Yes, sir. That was a 35% weight on the overall score.
Okay. Mr. Yancey, you had questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for all you do for the city. Were any of those references local businesses?
No, sir.
So do we harbor any concerns at all that a contract of this scope and labor and complexity can be properly serviced by an out-of-town vendor that's never had a commercial contract this size here before?
So what we, what we do is we do look at their references, and we actually follow up with those and call, and we had several municipalities that responded. One was Abilene that really had a comparable amount of properties that they were having mowed, and they gave us a favorable reference.
So do we have any idea of their modus operandi? I mean, obviously, to get labor spooled up, they're going to have to come in here, and if they've not had a presence here before, they're going to have to come in here and start hiring folks. I mean, they're not going to come out of Austin with the labor on it, or...
I am not in the business. Most of the companies, they use the H2B program, and they staff up pretty quickly, but I would leave that to the experts. We just determine a start date, and we expect the operations to continue at that date.
And if we get in the middle of this contract, and they're unable to service it to our level of satisfaction, we have recourse?
Through the contract, we can cancel the contract, and we'd talk to legal and purchasing about the proper way to follow up, whether we use the second highest score, if it was soon enough, or if we needed to go back out for bid.
Last question, the vendor that we're replacing here, how long was the business relationship with them?
Many years. I mean, I would say a decade, maybe.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Nichols.
Just for the public's information, can you tell us what the scores were, or at least the bid summary? Is there a slide? The bid summary appears in our packet.
The bid summary is in the packet. I did not prepare any slides as it was on consent. I can tell you that Encircle was the lowest. You're talking about the bid amount?
Yeah, the cost bid, yeah.
Yeah, Encircle was the lowest. The second lowest would have been, looks like it would have been Yellowstone Landscaping?
Page 38 in our packet.
Pardon?
Page 38 in our packet.
I'll get that. He's reading to me. Public doesn't have the packet. I was, I know the numbers, I'm just asking him to share them with...
So, Mayor, if I can jump in real quickly. Encircle was $1,079,000. Yellowstone, $1,210,000. Earthworks, $1,260,000. Green Team's, $1,295,000. And Texas Landscape Creations, $1,585,000.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, I wanted to make sure that was aware, because clearly we're going to have a discussion of that. Are there any other questions for staff before we hear from the citizens?
A couple of questions. First of all, Landmark is not based here in our community? It is.
Landmark was...
Landmark is, yes.
Yes.
Did you say Landmark?
Yes.
Yes, they are. They're located within the city limits. They're the only one located within the city limits.
Green Team is not located in the city limits, correct?
Their office is in Bryan.
And the previous vendor that had this contract for a long time, why did, why did they elect not to renew the contract?
The contract reached its expiration. We've gone through all the renewals. We had to go back out for proposal.
And they elected not to bid on it?
No, they bid on it, but they were 20% higher. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Kaler before I ask the other people to speak? Okay. Standby, Mr. Kaler, we may come back to you. I have two people that signed up to speak on this consent agenda item. I'll take them in the order that they are here. Mr. Tucker Gallagher with Green Teams Incorporated, you want to come forward, identify yourself, and you have several minutes to share your thoughts with us?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Tucker Gallagher. I'm the second-generation owner of Green Teams and almost a lifetime resident of College Station. Green Teams is our family-owned landscape company that has been serving this community for 50 years. I'm here with Shane Hagafill, who has managed our work for the City of College Station for the last four years. First and foremost, I wanted to thank city staff and council for the opportunity to serve the residents of College Station for over 20 years by maintaining many of your parks and building landscapes. We were disappointed we're not selected to continue to provide these services. We had hoped that our 50 years of local commitment and proven performance would count more on the bidding matrix. We are also concerned that an out-of-town contractor that has had no local presence would be able to service 189 city sites. We do understand and support city staff and council wanting to make the best possible decision for the citizens of College Station. We will be eagerly awaiting future opportunities to serve the City of College Station. Green Teams is here for you. I did want to leave one thought for the future with staff and council. The vast majority of residential and commercial properties receive basic maintenance, this is mowing and weeding, on a weekly basis from March through October, and of course, less frequently in the wintertime. This totals from 38 to 40 trips a year. The City of College Station specifications call for only 18 trips in a year, in total, meaning even high-profile city sites will go two to three weeks without a maintenance trip, even during heavy spring and summer growing conditions. We would love to see the City of College Station meet and exceed the local community standards for the care and presentation of those valuable and prominent landscapes. Please consider in the future elevating the city's specifications to include weekly maintenance visits. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. I appreciate your presentation. Also signed up to speak is Mr. Dan Riddle, Yellowstone Landscape. Mr. Riddle? Identify your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name's Dan Riddle, and I live in Franklin, Texas, but we have an office here in Bryan and have citizens and employees that represent the College Station area. So again, my name is, good afternoon, everyone, thank you for the time. My name is Dan Riddle. I work for Yellowstone Landscape. We're a full-service landscape company with 12 branches in Texas. We provide commercial landscape services for municipalities, homeowners associations, school districts, and other commercial properties throughout the cities of College Station, Bryan, as well as other local cities in the Brazos Valley. My comment to the council or general concern relates to the city agenda item 6.2, the award of the city's landscape service contract, sorry, the company awarded the work out of DFW, has no presence in the city or has no current employees in the market, which causes for alarm due to the size, safety, and labor force needed to compete, complete the work scope set by the city. My concern is that the quality of the city's landscape the residents enjoy would not be met by the awarded vendor based on the scope of work outlined by the city and other factors. Would also like to comment that the Brazos Valley Marketplace bidding platform under the Award tab has a listed price for the awarded vendor as $986,432.42, and the contract amount or agreement in the agenda today states the awarded vendor at $1,079,052, an increase of $92,618, with no explanation of the price increase to the prospective bidders. And it was not explained on the Brazos Valley web portal as well to us. So also, I'd like to comment that the RFP was graded, and the evaluation factors were as follows, 50 points for the qualifications and experience, 35 points for rates and expenses, 15 points for the references, and those graded bid tabulations have not been presented to us, nor could we find those posted on the city's platforms. Also, with the addition of FM 2818 to that contract, right-ofways, a large portion, we are concerned and don't understand how the current provider that's doing the work now, its price was undercut by roughly $250,000. Our concern is the city landscape will not be taken care of to the quality that the citizens have come to appreciate. In closing, again, thank you to the council, mayor here for listening today for the concerns. We just want to provide a good quality service to the citizens of this community who have high expectations of their parks and right-ofways and people that are going to do it in a safe work manner. So thank you again to everyone, and have a blessed day.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation, Mr. Riddle. Mr. Kaler, if you could back to the podium, please. I'll ask a couple of questions myself, and others may have other questions before we proceed. Does anywhere in our bid specifications indicate that, that a company must be local, say in Brazos County or within a certain number of miles?
No, sir.
Have we bid it before with those kind of restrictions or not?
Yes, we have. This is the first time that we have removed that requirement.
So previously, when we bid this contract three or five years ago, we actually did require...
A local office.
By local, the definition was?
I'm not sure, but I would assume within the Twin Cities.
Well, let's just assume it's within a certain number of miles or within Brazos County.
Yeah, could have been.
Okay, but this one, this time, we did not do that.
We did not.
Why not?
To open up the market for more competition.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we wanted to open the bidding up to get more bids.
Yeah, we consulted with purchasing and determined that that would be a factor that would get us a larger number of bids.
If you hold that thought for a minute, I'll turn to the city management, our CFO, with regard to changing that aspect of our bidding. Is this something we've done across the board to try to increase competition and get the best bid?
Not necessarily across the board. Again, I think it's really dependent on the individual service that we are, that we're looking at, and whether that would be a key factor or not. And this, this was one where, where, again, the decision was made to try to open up the competition as Pete indicated.
Okay, thank you. 50% of the weight was on recommendations and...
Qualifications.
Qualifications, I guess is a broader word, thank you. Which includes the, the history and performance and recommendations part, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And 35% was based on...
Price.
Price. Okay. Other questions for Mr. Kaler or Mr. White?
Was it, was it a department-level decision to go outside the city, or did that policy request come from the CMO's office?
Well, no, again, it, we don't necessarily, you know, purchasing and the various departments look at some of those things and, and again, try to determine what's going to be the best way to get the, a good number of bids or proposals on different projects. And again, there's, there's some flexibility in looking at those things, but it was not necessarily a, at all, a directive or anything from the city manager's office, no, sir.
Yeah, we really, we, the department on any bid, we consult with purchasing and try to come up with what we consider to be the most level playing field and the one that's going to return the best response to the city. And I know in previous years, we had had a lot of people that liked to pre-bid for this, and then very few that actually proposed. So, yeah, we were, we were trying to get, you know, a good field of proposers, as large as this contract is.
So this bid that, that Enbridge had, Encircle, excuse me, bid, how much lower was it from what we were actually paying our current vendor?
Our current vendor, the current contract was $1,255,009, nine dollars and 63 cents, so almost $200,000 less.
Those $200,000 less than we're currently paying...
And we're currently paying.
And a little bit, about, a little bit more than that relative to what this company bid, that's our current...
And the rating scale that you, you mentioned did not have any influence on local business. I mean, we, the council had a discussion about trying to help our community, help our businesses here in the community, but from your rating scale, there was actually no, no percentage of local being in that decision-making process, correct?
Correct. We did not have a local preference part to this, to this proposal.
And remind me again, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, what did the current vendor's bid come in at?
$1,295,496.
So they, their bid went up $40,000.
Which is understandable, there's, there's more acreage than we added all of 2018.
Do you feel comfortable with Encircle Management?
I feel comfortable bringing this to you. I would not feel comfortable bringing you a contract that's 20% higher just based on local, local experience, and that's what we would be doing if we picked the number two in this, in this process.
Mr. Mayor, I would, after all the discussion that you lead, I would request that we...
We haven't gotten to that point. We have a discuss, we'll have comments, but... but I'm not entertaining a motion at this time. I'd like to kind of follow this through a little bit more. Any other questions for Mr. Kaler?
I don't have any questions.
And one other question I do have that did come up, and there may be some others down this way. The second speaker, Mr. Riddle, said that he had not had a post-bidder's review. Is that, that may be the wrong phrase. Is that what we do after we award a contract?
Typically, yes. That is, would typically get posted after the contract is awarded.
And then each of the bidders, if they wish, can get information on where they scored--
Yes.
On each of the weighted scores.
And if they want to have follow-up discussions with us, we are open to doing that as well in all of these cases.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Kaler? Yes, Ms. McElhenney?
How many of the six that we got would be considered, say Brazos County? I know TLC is Landmark, Green Team's Yellowstone.
Four, four of the six.
So Earthworks and Encircle were the only two that were out of?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the scoring sheet, is that something that y'all have available?
I would defer--
Yes, we do, yes.
I know you have it. Is it something that we could see now? Or do we need to just--
Well, let me just anticipate a question or two and make sure I understand clearly. The weights that they used are the weights that were advertised. This body up here, if you believe those are the wrong weights, then that would be part of throwing out the whole process. And this body weighing in and saying you want different criteria or different weights to the criteria, and then they would go through a process of rebidding at this point. Those weights are what was advertised in the bidding, and you can't go against those weights because they were part of the bid. I know, I understand that, but I just want everybody to understand that those weights are set. And if, and while that would be an interesting discussion, if not a discussion that would somehow make us change the weights here tonight because they were advertised. That's all. Yes.
No, was not advocating a change, just if we had a concern that they weren't available or made available, it would be nice to see them. And I think it's disingenuous to say that we haven't given direction. We've had several discussions about preferring local contractors when feasible. So to remove a criteria that's been there for years, I question that being consistent with what council has made some pretty strong statements on here in the last six months.
Mayor, mayor--
Yes.
Just real quick, just wanted to remind the council that for true local preference by the local government code, for goods or services, it's between 50 and 500,000. So this contract is an amount is outside of that. And the local preference would be 5%, but it has to be within the city limits for that local preference by statute.
Is that how it was bid out the previous, several times it was done?
No, I believe in the previous bids or RFPs for this service, it was within a 30-mile radius of College Station.
Okay. Well, to me, that is, I know, not the legal definition of local preference, but that meets a reasonable person's understanding of what local preference would be. And again, I think that we've made statements fairly recently and fairly strongly that that's something we would like to pursue when possible.
Any other questions for Mr. Kaler before we get into a discussion? Do you have a question, Mr. White?
So is 5% 62,000 of their current bid?
No, it's 15, 20%.
62, that's within the 5% range if it's over the 500,000, correct?
It's a percentage of the bids that were made. That's the point.
Oh, bids that were made?
Right. So I ran those calculations to see what the differences were percentage-wise from each bidder. The difference between bidder number one and bidder number two was 11%. And so that would, that's comparing Encircle to Landmark. The difference between bidder number one, Encircle, and the next high bidder, Yellowstone, is 12%. The next difference with Earthworks is 17%. Green Team's, the difference is 20%. In Texas Landscape Creations, the difference is 46%.
One last question. When does the current contract end? When does the new contract, if we move forward within encircle management, when would they take over?
We have an agreement with Green Team's through the end of July.
The 1st of August is when the transfer would occur.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we've heard from the city management, from Mr. Kaler, and from two public speakers who have concerns and interests. You've heard that. I will ask the council what this, well, no, I won't. This item, we're just asking questions at this point. The normal procedure would be, does anybody want to-- There were no other, oh, we got questions on one other item. And then we'll ask the council if you want to pull any for a separate vote. And then we'll have that discussion if it gets pulled for a separate vote. So right now, we're still going down the list to answer questions. And I think Mr. Yancey had the only other one that was asked about was item 6.7, correct?
Yeah, we have to depart this topic now and move--
Well, that, normally, all we did, we will come back to it when we vote. Right now, we're just getting information. And we're going to get information on 6.7 because you've asked to have that pulled for questions, correct?
Yes, sir. I just have a couple of short questions on that, but I don't want to erase my brain on 6.2 either.
I think, I know you, your brain works very well. I think you can move to 6.7. I think we need to follow procedure. You'll ask a question on that, and then I'll ask if any, and that'll be the last one. If anybody wants to pull one for a separate vote, then we'll have a discuss, we'll have that done. And then we'll vote separately for the other ones and proceed that way. So I'm going to call 6.7 for questions only. Ms. Kane, this is a presentation, discussion, possible action, and amendment to the construction manager at risk, CMAR, contract with Garnier Construction, accepting the guaranteed maximum price amendment number two of $3,198,870.93 for the second early works package for wells 10, 11, and 12 project, plus the city's contingency in the amount of $319,887.10 for a total, excuse me, appropriation of $3,518,752.3. Approval of this item grants authority for the city manager to authorize project expenditures up to the city's contingency amount. Ms. Kane is here on the floor. Mr. Yancey, you have questions?
Thank you for all you do for this city, Ms. Kane. You run a tight ship. You may need Mr. Meckler or Maldonado to answer this question.
They're both here.
But maybe not. Does the item, what we're going to discuss later today relative to legal matters and water, the results of that, if enacted, does it mitigate the need for three wells down to one or two?
I will defer to our attorneys or water.
Now, the way I understand this project is the city needs these wells, and Stephen probably can help out on this too, to continue with its future water supply needs irregardless of the export project.
Good evening. Stephen Maldonado, Assistant Director, Water Services Department. The primary purpose of these three wells is for max day, when we need the maximum day of water supply and that we need to provide to the customers within our city limits. The issue is, as Adam mentioned, on the additional item tonight, it's more about cumulative water throughout the year, so more of our water rights, how much we can pull out in a given year. These particular wells are for the amount of water that we need to bring to the city in one given day in, say, a fire situation or a high-usage, summertime-usage situation. Another reason for the wells is redundancy. During summers, past summers, drought, in drought- particular years, all wells were on, we call it a green board, which means when you look at a computer screen, everything is lit up in green, all wells are running 100%, as hard as they can run. If we lose one well and something more bad happened, leaks, fires, we'd be in a bad spot. So these are redundant wells. These help with our max-day capabilities and capacities. And then another factor is the state requires us to have these wells to meet things like that for our protection or meeting max-day situations and providing minimum pressures and max, minimum velocities, things like that.
Very well. Thank you very much, Mr. Maldonado. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other, no, there are items being asked to have questions. So now we'll return to the full consent agenda. Is there any council member that wishes to pull one of the items for a separate vote? Mr. Yancey requests item two be pulled for a separate vote. Anything else? Okay. Hearing that, the chair will entertain a motion on item 6.1 and 6.3 verse 2 to 6.8 excluding 6.2. Chair will entertain a motion to approve all of those other consent agenda items.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. McElhenney, was it?
And Bob.
Somebody down that way. Take your pick, Madam Secretary. I know I heard it from this end, but-- Assign it to Ms. McElhenney. All those in favor of the motion to approve all these items, 6.1 through 6.8, except for 6.2, seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. We now have item 6.2 on our agenda. Let me just read what that is once more. Presentation, discussion, possible action on a contract award to Encircle Management Incorporated for citywide landscape maintenance and mowing for an amount not to exceed $1,079,050.42. The chair will entertain a motion to approve this item.
Move approval.
I have a motion and a second for approval. Now we'll have discussion. And this is where I think some members of the council wanted to get back to. You want to speak to your motion, Mr. Smith?
Sure. Thank you. I did look at this, at this item and the bids, and with the local preference discussion in mind and having looked at that information and seen the 5% and looking at these numbers and saw that none of them were within 5%, I don't have a problem with what we have here. And I think it complies with the state law, what the state would allow us with regard to local preference. So with that in mind, I am for approving this and getting this mowing underway. And thank you for adding 2818.
You have had experience with this.
Yes.
The contract itself, Mr. Kaler was asked about this. There are provisions in there regarding service quality and what happens if the, whatever, whoever the accepted bidder is doesn't perform. Are you satisfied with the terms of that?
Yes, I am. We can terminate the contract and, you know, and start over.
So that's pretty typical of what you've seen in the past?
Not typical to terminate a contract, but it's available.
Yeah, okay. Mr. White, you have any further things to add to your second?
Aye.
Okay. We'll come right down then. Mr. White, do your thoughts on this?
Mr. Taylor, I have, can I ask?
Oh, yeah. You have more questions you want to ask?
So for the last 10 years, we've used our current vendor to, for this contract. And this year, we've elected to go out to bid, and the language was different when we bid this out. What difference in the language that allowed non-local businesses to bid on this?
Only the requirement that they have an office within 30 miles of the City of College Station.
So for the last 10 years, give or take, we've had that clause in our RFP that they must have an office within 30, 30 miles from here?
Yes.
Could I just, why did we rebid it this year?
It expired.
Okay, so there's a rotation in contracts, so every three to five years.
Yeah, we have to.
Previous years, we just, we've accepted the next year if everything was fine.
Yes, we were out of renewals on this. It was time to go out for proposals again.
So there was a trigger that's in all of our contracts like this that eventually you got to rebid it for the exact same purpose we're discussing now.
So I know the timeline is very short since this contract runs out at the end of July. But is there any way to rebid this and put that parameter of that they must have an office within 30 miles?
So if, in terms of when this contract ends, if the council wanted to move in that kind of direction, we would, we would look at doing some type of an extension on the existing contract, if that's what the council wanted to do. And on tonight's agenda, really what you have is a choice to award the contract to Encircle or to not award it to Encircle. And if you did not award it to Encircle, then provide us direction on what it is that you may want to see in a future proposal.
So that's very helpful. So we have to approve up or down on this particular contract, and then we give you direction to go out and bid and bid it again within that parameter of the 30-mile radius. Is that correct? Thank you.
Ms. McElhenney, any comments on the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, I really think that we have made it clear that we do want to give local preference, not legal definition, person definition, like this real-world usage definition as often as possible. So I'm curious as to why we remove that criteria from something that it's already been there. The other part of this, I do imagine that most of their laborers probably will be from the local area. It has to be to be successful. But I'm also curious as to why, you know, we've got a really high bid and a really low bid, and then we've got four that are kind of clustered around each other. So experience tells me the four that are clustered around each other are probably the ones that really delved into what this contract is worth and will cost them. So I'm going to support this, but I'm very disappointed that we changed a criteria that this council has been very vocal about being important. It's also hard to make another decision when we're getting it right at the peak of mowing season.
Mr. Yancey?
Thank you, Mayor Nichols. To my esteemed colleague, McElhenney, she is exactly correct relative to the bid. This would appear to be a very quality bid process. You can take out the high, you can take out the low every time. And if the rest of them are clustered right around each other, then you've conducted a quality RFP. And I think, you know, I used to be in this business. I think we've done that. It's the nature of that high bid and low bid. Typically, you got a low bidder trying to buy the business, or you got a high bidder that because they would have to invest in additional personnel or equipment, or they're too busy, they'll, they shoot for the moon, and if they get it, great. Take those two out, and everybody else is tight, you've got a good bid product. But to the two gentlemen that spoke to us, to their credit, there's no ask before us from the marketplace or from the citizenry to not move forward. And I'd rather be proven wrong ultimately than right or wrong than miss out on the opportunity to save a couple hundred thousand dollars for the taxpayer, which is the charge that we give staff to do. So I have my real doubts these guys are going to be able to service it, but as esteemed colleague Smith pointed out, and I just looked at the termination clause, it's an instant out anytime. So if we pull the trigger with a local supplier, if these guys don't perform. And then lastly, it's a little disappointing that they weren't here to make their case, you know? And if they are out in the audience, I'd love to hear from the recommended vendor. So that's all I had, mayor. I'll be in support of this.
Thank you. Mr.-- Thank you. Mr. Schaefer, you want to add? Yeah, then I, then I will speak. No, go ahead.
Oh, no, no.
No, you have a comment, you have a question, please?
You know, I, I just attended an economic development meeting this morning. And one of the things that the community wanted is to support our local businesses. And, and I really take that to heart. I think, I think local businesses are the ones that we need support. I truly understand the bid process and I understand what my colleagues are saying. But I'm going to have to vote no on this, just simply because I, I, I want to be fiscal responsible, okay? And I know this is the low bid and I really take to heart the, the tax dollars that we're paying for this. But I think local businesses is something that we really have to make a priority. And I would encourage, just like, like my other member said, we have to make sure that we put something in our bid process that we stay local on this. So thank you for all your hard work. I, I know how important this is to the continuity, especially since this contract ends at the middle of the summer. But I, I really, I'm sorry, but I have to vote no on this just simply because of the, the local.
Now, Mr. White just made my, made my statements, if I reverse them, a lot easier.
Sorry.
No, easier.
Oh, easier.
Because I think we've asked staff to do their very best to bring forward a bidding process. And I will remind council, and I was on council for several terms. One of the easiest things for the council to cut in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty during COVID, when we got, certainly, as a matter of fact, if I go back even further to the Great Recession, it was really during Great Recession, we looked at mowing. We looked at landscape management and parks and the condition of the parks. And we said at that time, and I'm not sure whether Mr. Smith was director, the council at that time, that was one of the many things that the city had to look at, that they changed the requirements for how often you mow and how much of the areas of parks you mow and a lot of other things. And we had quite a discussion at that time about that. I don't know whether, I think it's eighteen times they're expected to mow each of our public parks, just as an example in that spreadsheet. I don't know whether we, whether that was a standard before the Great Recession or whether that's a reduced standard, but it looks like that is a standard that the city has been working with. And, and perhaps the green team has done much more than was expected and we very much appreciate that. But, but we, the, the city has supported that set of standards with regard to what they're bidding on. And I appreciate Mr. Gallagher's comments about maybe we ought to improve our standards and increase our standards a bit to match our future vision of what the city should, the aesthetics of the city. That's a separate discussion. I think I appreciate that thought and that dialogue. But we're dealing with a, a set of specifications that city staff believes is inappropriate and set of specifications if we've asked them to do it. I cannot bring myself to, to spend an extra two hundred thousand dollars to, to throw out this bid. In fact, I think you've accomplished what you wanted to by opening up the bidding process to find, see if there's anybody that can do these specifications, these specifications at less cost. And we've got a bidder that staff is recommending to us that they believe can do these specifications at a lower cost. I'm, I just can't find it in myself to oppose the motion. Even, even though local bidding and so forth, local business is truly important to me. These folks come in here, they've got to establish a presence here. They've got to do a good job or they won't have that contract along. And they'll be back to have a contract extension and staff will recommend whether we give them that or not. So I think we, you know, whether it's by design or, or not, it was certainly by design of staff to open up the bidding. That's what Mr. Kaler told us. We found a, a, a different base point, a price point. And I'd say we need to examine and let them try to do that. And as a couple of people have said, the contract is very clear that they, the staff is now responsible. I mean, that's, that's the interesting part of this. Mr. Kaler is responsible and he's brought this forward in a very responsible way with the support of the city management that, that this, this works. So I'm going to support the motion and I think I understand the, the great concern and concern I share about economic development, local businesses and so forth. If another business can come in here and compete, that's what the marketplace is all about. So let's see if that can happen. I do thank Mr. Gallagher, he did a really good presentation about what we need to be looking at in the future. I think we learned some things in this discussion. Mr. Riddle, thank you for your comments. If there are no other comments, the chair will call a question. The motion on the floor is to approve the, the contract as stated in item six point two on our agenda. All those in favor signify saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. I'm looking, hold your hand up. It looks like we got it. Okay, those opposed? Motion carries six to one. Thank you, Mr. Kaler. We appreciate the effort that you've made to bring forward a, a really good bid process and some options for us to look at. Thank you. Okay, so we've passed the consent agenda now and we'll work forward with the workshop agenda. Item seven point one, Mr. Ross Brady's coming forward. Presentation, discussion, possible action regarding, relating to a summation of the city's legislative activities during the eighty-ninth legislative session. Mr. Brady, before you start, I just want to say that you and our representative in Austin have done a magnificent job of keeping us informed. And I will defer to whoever's on that committee, you and you and one other, the three, the three closest to me. The work you've done to try to keep us apprised and even ahead of the agenda a little bit in a fast-moving legislative session. So thank you all, thank you both, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Good evening, Ross Brady, Chief of Staff. And this item is before you tonight primarily to get, receive an update from our state-level legislative consultant, Jennifer Rodriguez. And she's going to go over the whole session as well as typically kind of the items that have happened since the last Legislative Engagement Committee meeting. So the conclusion of the session, the governor's deadline to sign or veto bills and the calling of the special session. But before I turn the floor over to her, I want to just kind of give an update on the Legislative Engagement Committee and what they talked about at their last meeting about a month ago and their plans to continue meeting during the interim session with kind of three goals there. So to continue strengthening the relationship with our state-level officials, to, you know, continue engaging at the federal level and to begin drafting the city's legislative platform for the ninetieth session, which will still come to council before the beginning of that session for approval by the whole council. I will be here available for questions after Jennifer's presentation, as will she. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to her.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Rodriguez. Thank, welcome, welcome back.
Thank you.
And welcome back to Aggie land. I know you have a, some reasons to be in town occasionally.
Yes, yes, I, my daughter ordered her ring just about a month ago, so very excited. And thank you, thank you, Ross. I am going to put these on because that helps me. And I just have a few slides that I prepared, they're really more for me. So I apologize if some of it's a little small writing. But I want to just give you all a little recap of what just happened and, and then where we're headed. And just start out by saying thank you. I've visited with a lot of you either by Zoom or in Austin or email, phone, and I appreciate all of your engagement. It makes my job on your behalf much easier. So what I have here, these are, these are mine. You might see a little variation in this, in the bill numbers here because I don't include resolutions. But we started out in January, they started filing bills last November. And by the time we got to the bill filing deadline, and then there are a few bills that are allowed to be filed after that March fourteenth deadline, they came up with eight thousand seven hundred nineteen House and Senate bills. And again, this is, does not include resolutions. So that is a record number, which exceeded the record number that was previously set in twenty twenty-three as far as bills filed. I think that we will continue to see those numbers climb with each session. And I think that's just because technology makes it so easy and specifically with AI. People are writing bills very quickly. And what we've seen is a tendency for bills to also be filed that don't go through our legislative, excuse me, Legislative Council. And that's a body of attorneys at the legislature that actually draft all the legislation. And so we're seeing more bills submitted that don't go through that process. Now the catch is if your bill is going to be heard in a committee, it does have to go through the Ledge Council. So I'd submit to you that a lot of those bills never advanced and they weren't actual Ledge Council bills, for what that's worth. And also my other commentary on that, so you see that the governor got a little over twelve hundred bills. And there in that last column, he signed a little over a thousand, filed without signature. That, that is just what it is. He did not sign the bill, but because he did not take action, it becomes law. And then he has to exercise the pen on the veto and he did that with twenty-six bills. But that, that number of bills sent to him, that represents about fourteen percent of that, that total. And even though we got eight thousand seven hundred plus, it, it hovers around that amount historically. So even when they file six thousand bills. So what we're seeing is that a hundred forty-day period, really that's about all they can get done because you've got rules that come into effect that, that prohibit things from moving forward faster. So I guess they'll keep filing them, but that's about where they're going to end up. And then so with Ross and then with staff's input and of course y'all, we were tracking hundreds of those, those thousands of bills that were filed because as y'all know, a lot of what's going on in Austin impacts your ability to govern here at the local level. And we, we saw a lot of, a lot of bills filed that, that impact cities directly. And these next two slides, I just, I just wanted to throw them up here because this is fresh this week. So the legislature passed seventeen constitutional amendments that will appear on the ballot in November. So every session, the, in November, we have a constitutional amendment, amendment election. And these represent, they, they, they coordinate with legislation that was filed. So we have seventeen up and then you'll see that, I go to the next one, yeah. And just for comparison, in twenty twenty-three, we, we only had fourteen. So it's been since two thousand seven since we had this many on the ballot. And this will, this coordinates with things like the property tax relief bills that were filed. They do require things to go to the voters. Y'all may require, recall Cancer Prevention Research Institute from several years ago. Now we have a dementia one that they're asking the voters to approve. So a lot of things here, there will, usually after Labor Day, we see a big campaign by a lot of different folks on the different issues that are here. And, and what I threw up here was obviously, these are big issues, right? So when we were heading into session, we had a fairly good idea of what the legislature wanted to explore based on their comments, their campaigns. In particular, the governor, we knew from day one that what ended up being SB two was going to be his priority. And it certainly was. Lieutenant Governor issued a list of forty priorities and they all passed the Senate, not necessarily the House. But, but here, I, these are just things that reflect kind of the personality of this legislature. Obviously, when they passed over twelve hundred, there's a lot more. But, but these are, are some of the ones that stood out. And as you can see, also correspond with some of those constitutional amendments. And then the, the, the big one that did not pass, of course, that's been in the news this week is the THC ban. And so that's a to-be-continued issue and I'll, I'll talk more about that here because this is, where, where are we now? So procedurally, the legislature ended on that Monday, June second. And then the governor has twenty days to take action on all the bills that he had not already. He actually vetoed two bills during session. And one of them was in time if they wanted to revisit, but they chose not to. So he had the twenty days, that put us to Sunday, this past Sunday night. And the way the calendar failed this year, I'll say the governor took more time than he usually does. Usually it's wrapped up the week before that, that last deadline. But everybody was pretty much waiting to find out where he would fall on the THC bill, which was SB three. So he vetoed it about eleven fifty-three, eleven fifty-four Sunday night and then put out a press release on Monday morning that's, that he said he intends to, to convene a special session later this summer. And so what I have listed there at the top, that's the basic rules of a special session. The governor is in charge of this, calling it. He can call it whatever date he wants, he can call it whenever he wants, however many he wants. The, the limitation is that they can only last thirty days. So y'all might recall, we had four special sessions after, in twenty twenty-three after that regular session. And then the governor is also in charge of everything on the agenda for the special session. So he will issue a proclamation. He set this now for July twenty-first tentatively. And I say tentatively because there is no official proclamation yet. And I lifted, I mean, these are the bills he mentioned in his press release. So he said, I want to revisit these issues that were either vetoed or filed without signature. But the only bill up there that was not vetoed is the SB seventeen fifty-eight. So, but I'll just caution you that until we see the official proclamation, you know, this, this is just, you know, what we may expect. The issue that you don't see here, that we hear a lot of rumors that may be up would be a congressional redistricting. That would be, you know, a midterm activity of the legislature. So if it's not in the four corners of his proclamation, it's not eligible. However, he is allowed to expand the call of the special session as he goes along. And Governor Abbott has shown a tendency to do that some over time. Yeah. And, and then we're getting to, to where we are. Besides the special session now, everybody's headed into the interim period. A lot of campaign activity, there's a thirty-day moratorium on campaign contributions that precedes a legislative session and then follows it. So that thirty-day period ended Monday. So there's been a lot of activity in Austin with regard to that, a lot of announcements about what folks plan to do. And so what you see here is, I used to title a page like this, like legislative retirements, but nobody's really retiring anymore. Senator Nichols is the only one that's a true retirement up here. Everybody else is seeking a different office. And just looking at, at the Senate, it's, it's a domino effect. When folks up there start moving, then the folks down below do. So Senator Hancock resigned last week and he has now been named Chief Clerk of the Comptroller's Office. And whenever Glenn Hager comes over here to run the university system, July first, then Senator Hancock will take over and, and assume all the duties of comptroller. And so in doing that, it, it didn't, does not necess, excuse me, necessitate the governor appointing a new comptroller for this interim period until one's elected. The chief clerk can do that. Kelly Hancock is planning to run for comptroller next year along with a railroad commissioner, Kristi Craddock, who's just one of the statewide's that's looking to move. And then with, with Senator Huffman, I'll just say she is running for Attorney General against one of her colleagues, Mays Middleton. There's another gentleman that's jumped in that and I expect there may be more. And these are all, you know, March twenty-six elections we're talking about. The thing about Senator Huffman, she has a free ride because she's not on the ballot next year. Senator Middleton is going to be giving up his seat to run for Attorney General. And then we may see some of that with the House members because there is a special election in November for a Houston congressional district to replace the late Sylvester Turner. And that is a special election coming up. The period when members have to decide to file for their legislative seats is November eighth through December eighth. So conceivably, you could run in a special election on November fourth. Depending on how you come out, you might decide to give up your seat and then run for something else. I expect the governor will also call a special election for Senator Hancock's seat because that would, that would be open for, for quite some time. So there may be some activity out of, out of North Texas and Tarrant County as well. But your members, I, you know, I've seen your, your local delegation. I saw Senator Short already announced for, for reelection, as well as Dyson, and I haven't checked Wharton. But we had great relationships working with them this session and their staff. They were incredibly responsive, approachable and, and just helpful in general. And I think that we can continue to build on that. And as we're heading in toward the interim, besides the campaign activity, the other thing we'll see is they will pick up with interim committees that will meet. And so I think y'all's, y'all's legislative committee, there will be things to be looking at, looking over and maybe opportunities to inform members of. over, and maybe opportunities to inform members of positions that y'all would favor here. I'll stop there, and just if anybody's got questions about specific legislation or direction for me.
Any questions from council?
I have a couple of comments.
Ms. McLeaney.
I can't stress enough how helpful you and Ross were both in navigating the quagmire that is Austin. There was not a question we asked about a person or a personality or an issue that y'all weren't able to provide feedback and really good information on. I know that this is our first year to really take a hard look and a hard stance at the impact that our state legislator can have on our local governance. And that may not be a fair statement. It's the first year that we've had a set aside, dedicated committee to stay on top of this. We could not have done it without you guys, and I think this session has highlighted that we made the right decision. We absolutely need to be involved and aware. College Station has moved from being just a little town to now we're a city, and people are looking at us and watching us, and very interested in what we're doing. And I think that that comes with a lot of positive, but it also comes with some negatives. And navigating that has been a real challenge, but I can't tell you how thankful I am for the two of you consummate professionals, and I'm very thankful that they didn't take away our ability to have a lobbyist, because your Rolodex is amazing, and your ability to connect us with people very quickly, on the fly while we're there. Appreciate it.
I do have a question. You made a bit of a reference to the possibility the governor could add midterm congressional redistricting, based on a request from the president to do such in Texas. If that were, if he were to add that to the special session, or call another special session right on its heels, which he could do, and deal with something that he didn't like that came out of this one, extend it or add another item. If congressional redistricting were to come up, what's the legislature's role, and what is the current congressional delegation from Texas' role in this?
Well, I mean, the role will be just redrawing maps, right? So there is a redistricting committee in both the House and Senate. And typically, a special session looks a lot different, because it's so narrowly focused. So if it was specifically on this issue, it would go through a committee, just per normal. You know, congressional members, I think they've been meeting on their own and making phone calls, but they don't have, they could testify, but they don't have a role in the Texas legislature's process over that.
Do they have a, someone, the Speaker of the House, for example, since we're talking about Congress, is now talking about Senate, we're talking about the House. Is there not a leader of the Texas delegation in the controlling party? Do they nominate someone to represent them and lead that representation to the legislature?
Yeah, I don't recall it being that formal. And my understanding is, in Texas, we're talking about two seats, so it's probably areas around those two seats that would be, you know, folks would be most involved in. I will add, there's a timing issue on this, because of ballots and getting those printed, so, you know, this wouldn't be effective if it doesn't work sooner than later.
Well, it would have to, it would affect the primary season next spring.
Right. And we have seen, well, yeah, and I'll correct myself now, because we have seen it pushed back, but, yeah, you're right. Thank you for correcting me. It would be okay. And they have pushed those back before.
Now, the two seats you're talking about are already in the courts, that's in the El Paso area, correct?
I think one of them is, yeah. And then one going down further.
You don't see a lot of pushing around of lots of the other congressional districts to accomplish whatever goal they're trying to get?
I don't, but I have not, I have not looked well into it.
I think it'll be fun to watch, that's all.
Yeah, well, and I'll just throw this out there for more theater, because, you know, we thrive in rumors in my business. And, you know, there's a question, if you're in the minority party, you know, do you show up for a special session on that issue? However, and I have not looked closely in the last few days, but my understanding is, because of some quorum break issues in the last couple of years, that the House rules may have tightened on penalties for that, whereas before, it was pretty loose, and we saw some special sessions end because they didn't have a quorum. But there may be penalties that get more attention, that would come into play this time. To be determined.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for?
Thank you again, really appreciate all your help. Is it my understanding that you can, even though the governor has outlined some of his priorities, that he wants a special session, that you can introduce a bill on any, anything?
Absolutely. You know, he's going to put ABC in the four corners of his proclamation, and then XYZ will be filed, and it's absolutely okay, but what happens is, it's automatically subject to a point of order, so it won't advance. And we will see, people will file all sorts of things, hundreds of bills.
Local consumption.
Exactly.
Okay. I see no other comments from any of the other council members. Ms. Rodriguez, Ross, thank you for the presentation, we appreciate it very much, and we look forward to the interim discussions that our standing committee will be engaged with you on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's item 7.1, and I promised everybody that I wouldn't talk very much, so let's move on. 7.2, Presentation Discussion and Possible Action on the Wolfpen Creek Master Plan. Ms. Kelsey Hayden, this is a topic that's been discussed a number of times, and the council is very much interested in, and we're appreciative of the fact that you have some ideas to bring forward.
Good evening. Hear me? The item for you tonight is some potential improvements for Wolfpen, and as you mentioned, Wolfpen Creek has a long history. And so before we get started, we'll go over the background. I couldn't fit all of it on one slide, so I'm going to hit the high points. But the original Wolfpen Creek Corridor Master Plan was approved in 1988, along with a tax increment finance district that was created at the time for investment in the Wolfpen Creek Corridor. The amphitheater was completed in 1993, along with some drainage improvements, and the master plan was revised in 1998, so 10 years after the original. The lower and upper trails were completed in the early 2000s, and it's important to note that the Wolfpen Creek thatters expired in 2009. After that, in 2013, there were some site improvements to the festival site, and in 2019, the city took over and opened the Meyer Center on the site there that used to be the Arts Council building. And then, in 2025, the Parks and Rec Department put in a service-level adjustment for a master plan. We did do the work internally, so we did not hire a consultant, so the work that we're providing tonight is work that we have done internally. And in 2025, we started working on this proposed master plan. As a reminder, Wolfpen Creek is the entire corridor. This is the revised master plan that was approved in 1998. So again, it runs from George Bush all the way down to Highway 6. For tonight's conversation, we will focus on the park proper, so the amphitheater and the festival site, which you see here. But we also don't want to forget the trails. So this is the upper trails portion, which runs from George Bush down to the site. And again, this is all those restaurants, so it's the back of Sonic, and all the different restaurants that have connections into that trail system there. And then these are the lower trails, which run from the park site all the way up to the feeder road on Highway 6 by Cavender's. So over the last two years, we've really focused on activation of the space with the resources that we already have within the Parks Department. And so a few of those to point out, this first picture that you see here with the large crowd is a Starlight Music Series. It was the first concert of this season in April. We had almost 3,000 people on site, where we had Stoney LaRue and Jason Boland. Overall, we set records with attendance this last year at the three concerts that we hosted. We focused on bringing in well-known bands and names that people knew, and we drew out larger crowds. I also wanted to point out the picture below that of the two young girls in their costumes. This last October, we partnered with the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service to host a trunk-or-treat. So it was a trick-or-treat-inspired event, but we also handed out tree saplings. We had almost 1,000 people attend that event. We've also activated the space with the yoga in the park, so we do that on Saturday mornings. You can see some people there enjoying yoga, that's been really popular. And then we also have been doing the Food Truck Wednesdays, on Wednesday nights at the festival site. It was slow to start, but this last year, we've seen 200 people out every Wednesday at those food truck events. And then you can see the annual attendance there, we had about a 12% increase from 2023, where we had 97,000 people come out to Wolfpen, and then this last year in 2024, 109,000. In addition to some of those wins, we also have constraints with the site. I do want to remind you all that it is in the floodway, in floodplain, it's intended to flood. So this, while it might look alarming, it does recede, but we're seeing it happen more and more often. And so since I've been here, which has been 18 months, we've seen the water this high six different times. And so these are recent pictures, you can see the amphitheater there. The one on the right shows the bridge, so the water usually goes up and over the bridge. And the biggest thing to point out with this is the cleanup, because it's not just water that recedes, it's silt. So usually about six inches of silt stays that our team has to go in and clean up. It's usually about a good day's work, but we get it done. This is a picture of the flood area there. The blue is the floodway, and the black hatching is the floodplain. The peach color is the 500-year floodplain.
500-year.
Yes, sir. And so it's important to point out, although it was intended to be built here, any improvements that we are proposing in the blue or the hatched area could potentially require permitting from the Army Corps of Engineers, potentially. Something that we're already working on is a grant. We are working with Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension and the Texas Water Resource Institute. Texas A&amp;M AgriLife is the grant holder. We are partnering with them, and so this is an erosion control grant. It's over a four-year period, we started it in 2024, and really, it's a focus on natural vegetation being planted, invasive species being removed, and the creation of riparian buffers to help with erosion. So if you go out there today, you will see it. We've started no-mo zones, and it's really started to help in those segments that you see there highlighted in green. In addition to the proposed master plan that we'll get to in the next few slides, we also wanted to point out the importance of the overall aesthetic. And so the existing aesthetic that you see there in the bottom left, that is the pedestrian entrance on Holloman. We believe that it would be really good, and in whatever improvements that we move forward with, that we carry that overall aesthetic throughout the park to create a sense of space. This is iconic, it lets you know where you're at, and we think it'd be really nice to carry that throughout. The other two pictures are the Pearl District in San Antonio, and then the bottom-right picture, of course, is Aggie Park. This is the proposed improvements that we have for your consideration tonight and feedback. I'll go through them in numerical order, and then in the next few slides, we have some conceptual pictures to kind of show you an idea of what those improvements might be. So the first one is the installation of amphitheater-style seating. So right now, it's just a grassy hill, so installing some amphitheater seating from the front of house down. Item number two is the addition of shade. We, in our plan, are not proposing to shade the entire area, although it could be done. We are proposing to flank the sides, so that you could create some shady spaces.
Would the amphitheater area be shaded, the seats?
They would not in this plan, but it could be looked at.
But the shading, as you propose, is back further above those seats?
Yes. Number three, you can see it in the amphitheater site as well as the festival site, would be food truck areas, so dedicated pedestals for food trucks to come in, pads and pedestals. Right now, we require self-contained food trucks, it usually requires a generator, they're really loud, and so these sites would have the plugs for food trucks to not have to be self-contained. Number four calls out the existing restroom, doing some upgrades there, they're definitely needed. Number five is up at the festival site, that's the potential water feature or splash pad. Number six would be a gathering space, the addition of a pavilion. And then number seven, you see kind of throughout the amphitheater site, the entire amphitheater is currently fenced, and we do have gates, but they are not aesthetic, and they don't create kind of a sense of entry, and so we're proposing some improvements there to kind of let you know you're entering into a space. Or if we had ticketed events, you could have that as your ticket entry point. So the next few slides will be some conceptual photos. I also wanted to mention, the city was recently, we received a third party who's interested in partnering both on programming and improvements to Wolfpen, and a lot of the improvements that you'll see tonight align with improvements that they recommended. And then potentially, as an opportunity, they might bring funding to the table to help with some of those improvements. So the first one, number one, on the map was that amphitheater-style seating. So here you can see some conceptual pictures of what that might look like. There's three different options there, fully concrete, some grass, and then that top-right picture is, of course, again, of Aggie Park, on a much smaller scale. Number two calls out the shade, so again, a few different options. The bottom-right picture is the Mitchell Pavilion in the Woodlands, very popular site, very close to us. And then the top picture is just an option that would be maybe less shade, but still kind of cover some of the areas to create some shady spaces. Number three is those food truck pads that I mentioned, so again, creating designated spaces for those food trucks to go. We have them at all of our events, and again, they're self-contained, so they've got a generator, they're usually really loud. Number four, this also calls out the restroom, but overall signage and branding improvements throughout, but that's a picture of the current restroom. Just need some updates in that. And then this is some pictures of the water feature and splash pad, and so it's not your traditional splash pad that we're thinking there, again, going with the overall aesthetic and the big boulders, creating something that everybody can go to, and it's also aesthetically pleasing when it's not in operation. Number six is the gathering space or the pavilion that would be up at the festival site. And then number seven shows you what those entry points might look like. Again, something telling you you've arrived or you're coming into a space. And with that, those are all the slides that I have to share. We're certainly looking for feedback and direction on the things that you've seen tonight, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay, very interesting presentation. I'm sure some comments, Mr. Smith has already got his finger raised, so we're going to start from that end and work this way.
Thank you, Mayor. One, I mean, this looks great, and I also saw the proposal that the private entities submitted, and there is a lot of consistency among that. One of the questions that I have, though, is filling in the moat in front of the stage. Now, I know that doesn't, flooding is still going to happen, but at least when it dried out, we wouldn't have the moat. Is that something that would require Corps of Engineers permit, or all of the, you know?
We're not sure if it would require the permitting, but we would have to do coordination with them to make sure that it doesn't require a permit.
Okay, okay, but that's something that I think would make the, you know, attendance at one of those events much more pleasant.
We've heard that from quite a few people.
Go ahead, Mr., I'm sorry, I was following up on a question I had.
Oh, you're all right. Well, thank you. I am super excited, I've been waiting diligently for this for a long time. I've been waiting, uh, diligently for this for a long time. Um, and so I really appreciate it. I kind of want to start off by saying I, I overwhelmingly appreciate everything from the time that we've kind of started talking about this a few years ago, strategic planning to now, you can really see the shift that the city has taken, especially Parks Department to reprogram the area. So I want to preface by saying I really appreciate that because not only does that reintroduce folks to Wolfpin Creek or introduce it to them, uh, if they had never, if they're new here, but it also gives us opportunity to learn what works, what doesn't, and what the area really needs. Um, and so I think that with that, this is, I think, pretty similar to something Brian showed me that they had mocked up when he got here. Um, and so it's like, I think that these ideas have been gestating for a while. And i- it's nice to see them presented right now with some data to back it up. Hey, um, better or, or, uh, qua- quality over quantity for, uh, starlight seems to really work. Really engaging folks where they are. Uh, and so I, I'm really pleased with everything. Um, I, I think it's fascinating that this is right around the time we got that, that private, that private offer, um, which I thought was really interesting as well. I guess the one thing, um, I don't have anything, I don't, I really, there's nothing I can detract from this. I think it's fantastic. I love the idea that we're going to keep, I, I really push with a theme to have a distinct personality and look for the area. I think that's spot on, especially, um, the splash pad area. The one question that I have is for the seating at one, is there, is there a rhyme or reason to have it more of that style and not stadium seating, uh, with actual seats?
The thought, the thought from staff's perspective is the operations that go behind cleaning up after the floodwaters come in because the floodwaters do cover that entire area there. Um, we can go back to that picture. You can see, you know, most of that seating would be covered.
Right.
Um, it's, it's not impossible, but that is why we recommended the, without the chairs, the fixed chairs.
Sure. Uh, uh, that makes a lot of sense. I, 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 I could go either way. I just feel like the, the fixed chairs just offer, uh, something more. But I also understand sort of what we're working with. I think that if outside of any of this, I, I'm sure we're going to have hopefully positive things to tell you going forward. I think the number one thing to do immediately is to, those entrances, the number seven. I think really giving, uh, really signifying, hey, you're entering into that space. Like if that could get pushed to the top of the list as we work everything else out. I think that's super important to really start to designate you are entering into our arts district, our amphitheater. Uh, this is, you know, uh, and really giving it that personality, um, that it needs. But otherwise I, I think it's, I think y'all, y'all have done a wonderful job. Thanks for keeping this in-house. I know that is difficult in taxing, but, um, y'all are experts on it. So it's nice to see.
Mr. White?
Well, let me just echo what Councilman Wright's comments were because I, I'm, I'm in love with it too. I think it's, I think it's outstanding. I, I love the, the, the way you've kind of vocally put music. I mean, this is a great music venue. You've already had experience with music venues, uh, or, uh, you know, uh. So I think, I think it's wonderful. I love how you keep in the green space. I love, if you could go back to the, to the water feature slide, that's, that would really be, that would really be eye-catching, uh, if we could do something like that. I love the Lakewood Park, uh, uh, picture right there. I think it's great. I love how you're, you're kind of keeping the trails. So, uh, I love it. I can't wait to, to see it in action.
Ms. McElhany, any comments?
Can you start at that end? Can you start at that end?
I can keep on going. Mr. Yancy, Mr. Sp- I'm just going that way. Um, Mr. Schaefer, I'll get to you because I know this is a Parks Professionals' dream right here. Go ahead, Mr. Yancy.
Thank you, Mayor. Kelsey to the rescue. Thank you very much for this presentation and getting this off high center. We've been talking about it for the better part of three years. Um, it's time. It is time for Wolfpin Creek to reach its full potential. And I believe if we're going to do it, that we need to do it right. I agree with everything that my colleagues said here. Um, I would just like to see us go a little bit more. Um, I'd like to see the, uh, seat, actual seats, um, at least a significant bank of them. Uh, I mean, with backs and armrests and all of it.
A cup hold, a cup holder?
A cup holder would be great. Uh, the parking, uh, I do worry about parking because I have a feeling we're going to succeed that this council will be the one, and this staff will be the one to succeed. And we will significantly enhance attendance and quality of the shows and the quality of the facility. And that's going to mean more humans. So can you answer me the question? Do we have some sort of reciprocal parking agreement with Post Oak Mall?
We currently do, yes, sir. Um, so that's used for all of our events. We use Post Oak Mall for the parking. So it's an annual agreement that we do with them. Um, I don't know the fee off the top of my head, but it's a nominal fee to use that space.
Is the, you, in your time here at some of the larger events, you said at one of them we had how many people? The max number of people since you've been here?
Uh, well, that was the I Heart America event. Um, and I didn't talk about that on the slide, but, um, I Heart America event, we had 3,000 people at. And we had parking at Post Oak Mall. Um, and it was, it was not an issue both on ingress and egress. Getting people in and out was not an issue at all.
That was my question. So it handled, Post Oak Mall's parking facilities handled that level. Um, and if, I presume if we got events up to 6,000 people, um, we would just have to do some sort of shuttle bus arrangement?
Possibly, or a lot of times when these events are happening, the mall's already closed. Um, and so it hasn't, hasn't really been an issue.
Okay.
But potentially you could do shuttle as well.
Uh, the, if you could go back to your picture relative to the, uh, the gathering space or the mini pavilion, I, I'd like to see one of these really large or two or three of these, uh, in a, in a semicircle along the top there where those provide, all those gathering spaces have a view. Because I think if I looked at the map right, where you have the gathering space now, people cannot actually see down into the amphitheater. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, it'd be great if, you know, people could, could see it from those for the, for the shade that they offered. A part of me loves the idea about the splash pad or the non-traditional, natural-looking splash pad. It's really, it's a really cool idea. I just wonder about wet kids, you know, running around playing in that. And then they go down and, and, and the parents, you know, split attentions between watching their kids. And this would just be a waiting, this is just a splash pad, right? It wouldn't be deep.
No, it would not, it would not have, have any standing water. It would just be like a spring.
Some thoughts to the logistics of that. I don't necessarily have anything against it. It's just the divided attentions and the divided attractions. And, you know, what are you there for, for your kids? For the splash pad? Are you there for a concert? Are you there for both? And if you are as a young family, you know, what, what does that look like? Um, that's about it. I just, I, I think it's time and I think we need to do it right if, uh, we're going to do it. I agree with everything my colleague said, covering up the moat, even if it allows the water to pass, you know, beneath it. Uh, you know, some sort of suspended platform, uh, elevated platform over to bring the level up. And that's, that's all I had. Great job. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Nichols.
Mr. Schaefer?
Thanks, Kelsey. I don't have that much new to add. I agree with, uh, my fellow council members. Um, I, I could, I, you know, there are some ways to get into a lot of details here that probably we shouldn't do at this point, but I would like to go back to that overall kind of planned view you had, maybe for the feedback piece right there. Um, so on, on the seating, um, as you, I think you pointed out, it would just, the, the tiered seating, let's, let's, let's call it that you showed, which is still kind of has this natural feel to it, would just be toward the front there where you have number one.
That's correct.
And that would be the area that floods.
Yes.
So I, I actually like it that way. I know a couple of my fellow council members would like to have seating with, you know, chairbacks and, and et cetera. But I think the, that people having the choice of where to sit is still offered by what you're showing. And I think that creates a nice feel. I've always liked the open grass slope there for that reason, that it's, you know, blankets, chairs, whatever. And this provides a little more structure to that, but it doesn't tell people you sit here and you sit there, which, um, sometimes I think causes problems, particularly if it's going to flood. It's going to be a lot harder to get in there and clean things out if you've got a bunch of fixed seating. So I would, I would differ from a couple of my, my colleagues on that one. But, you know, I could go either way. The shade, I, I don't really, uh, the, the shade, the same reason as the shade being pulled back because it would be in the flood, floodway or the flood, yeah, it would be in the floodway, I think. Is that right?
Um, for, for our thought in doing the shade flanking the stage, it wasn't, it was to eliminate, um, blocking any viewpoints. Um, but when you look closer at Mitchell, the entire shade, you can still see under it.
Right.
Um, and then of course, another consideration for us was we just now started hosting our fireworks there. And so if it's covered, you wouldn't be able to see the fireworks. Um, but certainly wouldn't want to make a decision for one event a year.
Yeah, good point. That, I mean, that would be something to consider that it seemed, it would seem a little odd to me that the, what might become the premium seating at the front wouldn't have shade. And, uh, and the shade would be at the back. And at the same time, I've always thought it would be interesting for us to evaluate what we might do with trees related to shade. Now that's not, that's not an instant solution here because these structures are instant solutions. But in a lot of parks, um, you know, mature trees provide really nice shade. And, and the orientation of this particular feature, if it had, if, and I'm, and this is kind of theoretical because it would take 30 or 40 years to get to the trees you want. But if they were across the back, I think where Bob was talking about, you would have a nice area at the back that was shaded by trees, a tree canopy. And, um, the way the sun angles are there, you know, it may or may not provide, um, shade when you need it, um, in terms of heat. But that's, that's probably a moot point. I like the idea of some sort of shade structure to, to help more immediately. Um, you had one thing in here related to some of the details, like the signage, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can you show that signage? So, yeah, there you go. So are there, this is probably more than we need to get into, but the welcome to the creek sign that you have in this, in this picture, are there thoughts about how that would be updated?
Uh, we, we haven't really done the work on that. Um, but these signs are throughout the entire upper, lower trails and the entire park system. So, um.
For what it's worth, I've always felt there was way too much information on these signs.
There is a lot of information, yes.
I appreciate the work that went into them. I appreciate the way they were put together. I think the, you know, they're somewhat hard to interpret. That master plan that's included in that one is a little bit hard to interpret by, for a lot of people who don't read maps very well.
Um, so I don't know.
I would hope that we would pay some, maybe some attention to the content of these and the more quick read that people are accustomed to today, I think, uh, to make them, uh, more useful onsite. That's just a, a passing comment, I guess. But, but I think it, I think it can be important. I think we have a bit of problem with this at a lot of places. I think we have a problem with maps and the way they're displayed on, the way we've put them up at, at Northgate, to be honest. I don't think they're very readable or very useful. So I, I think we ought to try to pay more attention to that. Um, let me see if I got, or I like very much the, the boulder theme that you mentioned. I think that's great. I think that water feature should be something that would be interesting and attractive as a destination for everybody in the city. And I think if you not only think about the splash pad, but how the water is actually introduced to the site, um, maybe some of it shoots into the site and does interesting things that you don't find, um, at some of the other features, that can be something that is attractive and people want to go, kids want to, want to go to those places. Um, yeah, I said I didn't have much to add beyond my, my fellow council members, but I do obviously. Uh, there are several other things here that I really like. I appreciate very much that you all did this work and I agree with them. I, I look forward to seeing, uh, how Wolfpin can, can become better than it is even. Thanks.
Ms. McElhany, back to you.
So I don't bring this up very often, but many of you know, my mother-in-law Lynn McElhany was on council for a very long time. And if we had planted trees when she was on council along that back rim, uh, they would be 30 to 40 years old at this point. So Wolfpin Creek is something that's been in the collective consciousness of the city for a very long time. And we've had successes and we've had some pretty massive failures, uh, if I'm recalling. Um, most of it due to the, the drainage issues that are there. And, and I think that we're perfectly primed to move forward, um, with trying to knock this out of the park, so to speak. How much of that area is fenced? I don't have a, a, a gauge of that.
It's the, let me go back to this overview. Um, the entire amphitheater site. So if you're looking at this map, um, well, actually, I'm sorry. I don't, I'm not trying to make anybody dizzy. Um, where all the sevens are, those are kind of the gated areas. So everything within that area is fenced in.
Okay, and how many people can we easily fit within that area, would you estimate?
Our ca- our capacity currently is 7,000 people. And that's like a standing capacity.
Shoulder, mm-hmm. Okay, yeah.
We've hit that a few times.
At what, what, which events?
Um, so we have a local promoter that rents out the facility, usually November, October, every year. And I think there was a Cody Johnson concert, um, that was at capacity. Maybe a few others that he's done.
Is that space, um, is that amount of space where we need to be? We're not trying to expand that, stay within that, just put some anchoring entry points? Is that?
We are not proposing to expand it, but we certainly could.
Okay. Um, I have mixed feelings about splash pads myself. I do love the bouldering, uh, aspect of it. I don't have the concerns that, uh, Mr. Yancy mentioned about, uh, parents not, uh, having full attention. And that's one of the blessings of a splash pad. Your kids are typically running and screaming, uh, right there. And you can have a conversation, which is very different than if you're, say, at a swimming pool. Um, on the seating, I really, I didn't expect to, but I really like the board seating that you find in different spots at Aggie Park. Um, it, it's comfortable. It's easily accessible. It's not in the way. That may be something that would be easier to clean. I, I don't see the need for seats with arms and getting that, that fancy. But I have found this very comfortable as someone who really enjoys sitting at, at these events versus parking on a, a grassy knoll. Um, shade, I think that that's really critical. Um, especially if we're having events, you know, uh, in the summer. I would err on the side of having more versus, versus less. Um, I, I think the one there at Mitchell Pavilion is absolutely hideous. I don't know if there is a, um, a, a less, uh, invasive, uh, way to do it or a retractable way to do it. But I think that that's something that I would personally like to see. Um, for this, this project, I thi- I think we have a habit of going partway sometimes. I would like to see us do this right. Um, and I think we're on the right track. This is a really good, um, really good solid starting point, and I'm excited to see where it goes. But I would say for Wolfpin, I would dream big.
I guess it's back to me. Uh, just two, two comments. Um, one, going back to Mr. Smith's comment about, uh, I'd like to at least investigate the impact of removing that moat in front of the, uh, in front of the, uh, stage. I, number one, I think it always looks ugly. Uh, the water is never clean. There's usually mud just below the surface. And I know it's a, it's constant maintenance issue. Uh, if it were not there, you'd have more space just off the front of the amphitheater. Uh, maybe you actually could raise the stage artificially by a couple of feet inside there so that you have a, a little higher, uh, performance area. But that's another question. But I think the, if you could look into that, at least I certainly would encourage that. I support most of the other comments that have been made here. Well, I'd love to see stadium seating, uh, with a place to put my can of beer. Yeah, I'd love to see that, but, uh, I don't think I need that. Uh, some of those other ideas are, are certainly, um, useful and probably more aesthetically, uh, smooth as far as fitting it all together. Uh, the other, uh, kind of thing that brings us to maybe a closure point on this, or at least a move, a movement point. You indicated that there were, uh, there were some ideas from the private sector. I've seen one of those. Uh, I think you may have already met with those individuals. I think city management, uh, has as well, and economic development has as well. I think, I'd like to see it, I really love the idea of a third-party entrepreneurial engagement here. Certain number of days a year, they have the rights to market, uh, entertainment events there under some, a lot of guidelines and a, and a big development agreement. But I think having them involved would be really excellent. And I, I think, uh, I think the ca- council would support that within the constraints of what the Rakin Parks Department and the city would like. I'd certainly encourage it. It's a way to raise some money. And, uh, so therefore, uh, I think before we can move forward specifically, do this, do that, do something else, except maybe a few of them, things like Mr. Schaefer said, well, or maybe with Mr. Yancy, you start with the, 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 uh, the gates. So the sa- sa- sense of place and, and that sort of thing that, uh, ought to be done.
Hey, just one more. It's more of a cautionary thing. I mean, okay, back when we first did the thing, we had these wonderful looking lakes. When you try to do things that nature doesn't want you to do, you're gonna fail. And, and putting nice seating doesn't want you to do, you're gonna fail. And, and putting nice seating in the floodway is, I think it's, it's a, you'll spend a lot of money, and then it will become something you have to go undo.
Does it have to go in the floodway, the seating?
Well, that, yeah, that's part of the, the, yeah. I think we need to look at those things and, and give due respect to Mother Nature in the design of this, and, and go big. I agree. If we're gonna do this, let's, let's don't creep into it. Let's, let's see what we gotta do to make it really succeed.
I, I think the shade of some kind will be wherever, that, that'll be the premium seats in the afternoon, early evening for a lot of people. No matter where you locate it, people are gonna gravitate their, the concept that Mr. Yancey talked about, having maybe some pavilion-type structures at the top level, or maybe you have your seating and, and shade cover at the top level, so people are in the lower level in blankets, and maybe even those stair steps would be, would be great. But my point was really getting to, moving forward, if there is an active engagement from an economic development point of view, and, and Parks and Recreation Management point of view, that we need, we ought to be looking at a third-party engagement. Absolutely. Let's, let's get them harnessed and see if there is something there that matches a significant part of that, and then see which of those pieces need to be built first, and who's gonna pay for them. And that, that to me is how we move it forward from here. I don't know that tonight, here, this is a workshop, generating ideas. As far as direction goes, I think there isn't any one of us up here that doesn't want to see it done tomorrow, or be ready for next year, or have some of those things done by next year, but if there is a valid, viable third-party entrepreneur that wants to be, to sign an economic development agreement with us, then let's explore that as well, and do that early on, which I think is happening.
And, and Mayor, if I could just add, add one thing here, certainly, one of the next steps we'll be looking at is what some of these things are potentially gonna cost, getting some, some of those ballpark figures, and then we'll be looking at recommendations on funding sources and those sorts of things, whether it's some of our unassigned fund balance, or, or, or other things. That, that will all be part of some of the next steps on, on this whole process as well.
But in terms of putting a timeline in those next steps, are you prepared to talk about that?
I don't know that we have put a timeline together at this point, but we certainly can do that, yes.
Well, should the council put a timeline on that?
Council can do whatever you wish.
Well, I think the sense up here is, we'd like to, given, given that we know you're engaged in some economic development discussions, and I know that's gonna take a couple of months probably to sort through what their interests are, what's, and what you guys are talking about, what each of these elements is gonna cost, or modified versions of these elements, I would think we ought to hear back by early fall. I don't know whether others would disagree with that. As soon as, as soon as you decide whether you've got a third-party partner or not.
We have had an initial meeting with a third-party partner who is bringing the programming aspect, and then some potential capital improvements with that. We've had that initial meeting with them. The next step with them is to bring a proposal to you all to ask if you would like us to engage in some sort of contract negotiations with them. I think you'll see that in the next couple of meetings in executive session, and then staff would negotiate based on y'all's direction with them moving forward. I don't anticipate that that process would take very long, because we have that initial meeting. You all have seen that information, I believe, or at least some of you have sent that direction.
Some of us have, yeah.
And so, we'll bring that to the whole council and get your direction there. From a, our Capital Projects and Parks Group have done some initial looking at costing of some of these elements, and we can show that to you as we move forward in more of a menu format, so that you can see what some of these elements cost. And then, like Jeff said, it's gonna have to be a discussion in budget to allocate some of those dollars to this project, because we have not done that yet.
That would be appropriate, but I would imagine some of that discussion with the third-party, if, if it reaches a point where you're bringing something to us that city management would recommend that we consider, that may have a little bit of design element. They may make some suggestions about moving things around, or, or some aspect of that to make, to make their business model work better, and that might be to our advantage as well. So, I kind of leave that part of it open a little bit, that's all. Mr. White had a comment.
Does, does our third-party vendor have an expectation that this will be done for us to move forward with them?
Well, we don't have a vendor. We, we need to look at, actually, we probably need to look and see if anybody else is interested, too. So, probably not possible to just move forward with the agreement with somebody that proposes that. Need to see if there's any other interested parties out there. But they do, the gentleman we talked to did have some thoughts on improvements to the, the amphitheater area that he believes would make it more attractive to artists. Access to the amphitheater itself without having to walk in front of the crowd, the layout of the green room, potential seating and shading, but nothing that we haven't looked at or considered ourselves. And so, some of it may be possible, some of it may be more difficult, like Kelsey said, with the constraints of the, the floodway and the floodplain on the site, but all things that we can look at.
Thank you very much. Anything further that we need to direct staff? Sounds like they are already well into it. I think you sent some passion from up here on the, on the dais. However, I think I did hear that there are budget commitments that we're going to have to consider, which won't necessarily dampen the passion, but will make us think a little bit more. We'll come to that at the next opportunity when staff is ready to come back to us. Ms. Hayden, thank you for the update, for the creative ideas. You and your staff, I know, work hard at this, and, and I know that you're committed to creating as great as activation and, and experiential opportunities that we can make out of our entire park system, and this is a really great example. Thank you. Okay. I said we were gonna be done by eight o'clock, but I doubt it. We, we did have a speaker, but the speaker has indicated he's not here, if that's correct, so we move, we move ahead without the, he was here, and then, for personal reasons, he had to leave again. So, yeah. Knowing the gentleman, he will certainly share his ideas with us at, at an appropriate time. Seven point three, I think we're up to, is Ms. Kane, presentation, discussion, possible action relating to the capital improvement projects update. Semi-annual, I think, about twice a year you come with this.
Yep, that's correct. Jennifer Kane, Capital Projects. Tonight, I'm gonna go over our capital projects update. As you mentioned, we usually do this about twice a year. I have a handful of projects that I'm gonna talk through, and I certainly am prepared to talk to other projects as well if you have questions, and feel free to ask questions along the way. First up, I wanted to remind everyone, all of you, and then, of course, everyone listening, that we do have the capital improvements dashboard that's on our website at cstx.gov/cip. We do have the majority of our projects on here, everything that's mapped and has certain locations. You can sort by facilities, parks, streets and drainage, wastewater, those types of things. We actually have about eighty-two active projects right now. There are a number that aren't showing up on the map because, for various reasons. Some are electrical-related, and so we're not showing them for security reasons. We have a number of projects that are more like feasibility studies, programming, that don't actually have site locations yet, and then we also have a handful of smaller projects, like generator replacements and repairs, that just aren't showing up on this map. First up, we've got the Rock Prairie Road widening. This is a section from State Highway Six to Town Lake that's been under construction for, for a little bit now. We are replacing all of the existing asphalt roadway with a concrete roadway, curb and gutter, including storm sewer, bike paths, and sidewalks. The first five phases have been completed. We're currently in phase six, and that is the section from Town Lake to Dublin Parkway. It is currently closed. We have detours in place while they complete that work. We do expect it to be completed in September of, of this year, so not, not too far off. In the picture you see there, and the view is Rock Prairie westbound at the Bird Pond intersection heading towards Scott and White at the hospital.
Can we ask questions as she goes?
Yeah, I, I think it's best to ask questions when you're here. So, ask a question, please.
So, I, I don't want to switch gears on you too much. Are we considering, or where are we at on the Public Works HQ? Because it's not on your list here today.
No, no.
Right?
I, I don't have it on my list, but I can, we can talk about it if you'd like.
Oh.
My, my question's ultimately gonna weave to this destination. If we're looking at putting Public Works off of Rock Prairie, don't we need to do the full-meal deal on Rock Prairie?
That's not this project, but there is another project about the rest of Rock Prairie East where
Right.
Logically, that would come up, that, I don't know whether you're gonna talk about that or not.
It's my next slide, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Go to the next slide, then you can ask.
Yes. So, I, I mean, as, as you mentioned, we are looking at a site currently that's off Rock Prairie Road that we're considering for a Public Works facility. I don't know if it will be the right place or the right fit for it, but it is located off Rock Prairie.
At the same time, are we considering that if we did do that site or any other one, other than an upgrade to our existing site, are we looking at all at the disposition of that existing block of municipal facilities that we have there, off of a, 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 a cronic tap, of what we're gonna do with it, from the police station all the way back to the current Public Works HQ?
Yeah, we, we have talked about it some, and I don't know if, if CMO wants to weigh in on it at all, but there have been some discussions that if we were to vacate there, you know, there could be some other, the options for that site. Do keep in mind that it's not just Public Works located there. We have Public Works, Capital Projects, Fire Administration, Utility Customer Service, and of course, the court. So, we would have a number of components that would still be housed there, even if Public Works moves. So, there would have to be considerations for that if, unless everyone was to move off that site.
And the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar contract that we entered into with the company to do the study, feasibility, site selection, site analysis relative to Public Works HQ, what all was included in that? Would that be soil testing for all these sites, and feasibility for, you know, and a, and a laundry list of choices for us to choose from?
Yeah, you, you basically covered it. We actually are, and we're looking and doing geotech work on two of the sites that we're looking at. Actually, some of it is gonna start tomorrow, but yes, they're doing some environmental reviews on selected sites. They're looking at traffic impact analysis. They're looking at drainage impacts, those types of things. They'll, they'll help with some survey, upfront survey work, and then, of course, all of the programming, and all of the inventory analysis and those types of things, and projecting out for us of space layouts, those types of things.
And the roundabout, final destination question. If a site impacting this roadway is ultimately selected by this council, wouldn't that necessitate that we do the full-meal deal, the full width on this last length of Rock Prairie? I mean, surely with that number of vehicles letting out in the morning.
Well, it would necessitate the council also finding the money to do it, you're right, but that, that would be an appropriate discussion at that time. I'll turn to city, city, CMO. It really is the CMO that kind of coordinates how these things fit together. I'll have to defer to you guys about whether you need a four-lane road or not to adequately service a major public facility that's located on that. The only site we're considering is the old landfill site, not the landfill itself, but the undeveloped site and the frontage of it. I will say that the Salway's Management Agency, at its last meeting, authorized the permitting of the city to enter into agreement to do the geotech work there.
And doesn't that?
But they haven't made any decision about whether they're willing to transfer, sell, or whatever of the property. That's it. That has, that'll come later when we get all the information, and we weigh and balance the different locations.
But the sum total of the city's Public Works vehicles coupled with the CSISD's buses letting out on that road, all at the same time in the morning?
So, we would have to do, we would, the, for the Public Works facility, if it were to go there, part of that process would be a traffic impact analysis. They would have to do that to see if it triggered anything. A lot of times, I mean, there will be traffic there. I don't, I personally don't believe that it would trigger an additional width to the roadway. It might be, maybe needed a, a turn lane or a deceleration lane going in and out of the facility that might be needed, but again, that would be something we'd have to look at specifically if we were to select that site. And we have a ways out on, on this next phase of Rock Prairie because of land acquisition, which I was gonna talk about a little bit, so the timing would, would be okay. We wouldn't be under, I wouldn't expect we'd be under construction necessarily.
Well, under construction is one thing, but I think his point is, it's under design.
It is.
If you're designing those two lanes, however, I think you said that it could be expanded to four lanes. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes, yeah.
So, what you're putting into design now is not lost cost?
No.
And, and Jennifer, what's being designed now is a three-lane?
It's a three-lane section. You can see it up on, on your screen, and so it's two-lane seats direction with a center turn lane. And it is, as you mentioned, and then it's got the bike lanes, and then sidewalks off to the side, and it is designed in a way that you could add that fourth pavement lane fairly easily. When you remove the bike lanes from out of the main roadway section, add a little bit to it in the buffer space, and then the bikes would go onto the shared-use path, and so you're not redoing any of the pavement in order to add that additional.
So, the medians would not be continued past Dublin or past Town Lake?
No.
Okay.
And we, the land acquisition that's happening now would facilitate a fourth lane, should we need it at some point?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Please proceed.
So, we kind of covered this slide, so we are in design for this, this next section of Rock Prairie from Town Lake to William D. Fitch. We are in the ninety percent design phase. They're, they're getting to ninety percent design. The big thing that really is critical path right now is land acquisition. We have about ten properties that we're working with, some that are, you know, going more smoothly than others, I would say, and we typically gauge about a year to two years for land acquisition, and we're not even quite a year into it. So, we've got, we've got a substantial amount of time left there. The other thing that is a little bit unique, we have three different gas companies that have pipelines out there. Normally, we don't have quite so many, and so we're working with all of, all of them to get the approvals that we need. It's called a, a loano, a letter of no objection, that we can work close to them, or what we would need to do, working close to their gas lines, because they cannot be avoided. Next up, we've got a cronic tap rehabilitation. So, this is the, in front of the Public Works Administration, so from Texas Avenue to Highway Six. This is one of our first concrete roadways. It's gonna, that's up for reconstruction, and so we're replacing the entire section with new concrete pavement, and also adding ten-foot-wide sidewalks and replacing some existing storm and sanitary sewer. We have a hundred percent plans complete. We're finalizing all of the bidding documents, and it should go out to bid here in the next month or so. So, you'll see construction starting, hopefully, following the contract approval, hopefully this fall. One thing to note, the Dartmouth intersection there, there's a substantial amount of work there, and we're working, we worked really hard to see if there was a way to maintain traffic whenever they're rebuilding a part, a portion of that intersection, and so we'll likely have to have some, a closure there at that intersection for a while, but we've coordinated that already with police and fire, so they're aware to figure out the best ways in and out for everyone.
Is there gonna be a roundabout anywhere on there?
No, there's not.
Not at Dartmouth?
No, we did look at that, but there's, there's not, there's not space. There's not appropriate space there with the constraints.
Pretty wide intersection, but I'll, I'll go with your engineering judgment. I just, I'd like to see a roundabout in that area. This seems to me to be a very logical place, but if it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit.
All right, then Lincoln Avenue. So, I'm sure.
Which does have a roundabout.
Which does. It is, actually, it's gonna have two little roundabouts, one at Munson and one at Nimitz. So, it's under construction, has been since last summer, full reconstruction all the way from Texas Avenue to, to University. It also includes water and wastewater utilities and storm sewer, and then a signal modification down at the end of University. So, we started on construction at the Texas end, and as you recall, we tried very hard to maintain traffic, at least in one direction, and that was unsuccessful due to the condition of the pavement compiled with a lot of the storms we were having, and so we had to go to a full closure, and we are continuing that as needed. It really was important for safety, not only of the workers, but safety of the vehicular traffic going through there. It just was not in a good, in good shape. So, we have finished the section from Texas Avenue to Foster. That's complete. We're currently working on the next section from Foster to Nun. We do expect that section to be complete on the end of this month, early, early July, if the rain will hold off, and then the intersection at Nun will remain closed to get that, that work redone there, and then we'll keep working in sections. Then it'll go Nun to Ashburn, and then Ashburn to Munson, and then Munson, Munson to University. One thing that we're currently waiting on is Optimum has not completely vacated the, the areas that we need them to vacate, and so we're waiting on that. They have a big vault located down near University, but we're getting very close to it with our waterline replacement, because the water is happening ahead of the street work, and so that, that is a, a challenge.
I know the City of Brian had to wait on Optimum for, or as a frontier, one or the other, for a very long time.
I think it's Optimum.
And then, finally, you just have to embarrass them into moving it up their agenda and getting it done, but we'll leave that to the time you want to do it. But we'll leave that to the time you want to do it.
And so currently, we are, there have been a handful of change orders related to just various things that you encounter on rehab projects. We had some, a section of soil that had some contamination. We had some water service lines, different things, utility work that was in locations that weren't expected, some backed up drainage, those types of things. And right now, considering the change orders and the additional time associated with those, we're looking at February of 2026 for Lincoln to be completed. Next up is new water wells, which we talked about a little bit earlier. So so far, well, on this one, so we're building the three new wells out on our Wellfield property, as Stephen mentioned, for redundancy in the max day capacity. And we are, we are in design currently. We also have a construction manager at Risk on board with this one, so they are working with us all throughout the process. And it has allowed us to already bring to you two now different guaranteed maximum price packages. So they're releasing packages of work as soon as we can get far enough along to bid them out. So so far, we've gone under contract for GMP 1 and 2, which includes silt fencing, staking, the drilling of a test well, and then clearing and construction for access roads and the construction of the well pads as well. So they're getting, they're actually already started out on site, and they should be drilling the test well here in early July. You will expect to see two more GMP packages. The next one will be a lot of materials focused, and that'll be things like ordering all the pipe, generators, those types of things. And then the fourth and final GMP package will be the largest of the four, and that will be for the actual construction and drilling of the permanent wells, and then all of the installation of the collection line. And I would expect that to get to y'all in November, early December timeframe.
I have a question on this real quick.
Yes, please.
Just curious, how deep are the wells?
Well, we don't know exactly how deep yet. Probably around 3,000 feet, I think, is what they're projecting. We'll see once we do the test well.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the McCullough Utility Rehab. So this is the rehab of water and wastewater lines in the south side area, so Arizona Street, Phoenix, Carolina, Georgia. So wastewater lines are being replaced and moved, and then we had water lines being replaced as well. So this one, the majority of the utility work has been completed, and the contractor is mostly focusing on patching the roads. If you've been down any of those roads lately, or even down Holloman, there's a significant amount of just cuts and patching in the road. And so they're working to do those patches. And then we've coordinated with our Public Works and the Streets Department, and as part of their street maintenance plan in FY '26, they will follow behind us and resurface all of those roads, including Holloman. So it is a little patchy probably for the next couple of months, and then it'll all get resurfaced.
And that includes the curb and gutter where needed, in addition to milling overlay?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Bee Creek Phase 3. So this is another project that's almost complete. So this was the construction of a new 48-inch sewer line, and then 48 and 42-inch, and then also had a rehab of some existing sewer line as well that happened, or slip lining between Texas Avenue and FM 2818. So the majority of all of that work has been completed. Right now, the last piece is to rehab the manholes. And so they're just, they've just been gearing up to start all of that work, but of course, the rain continues to slow, to slow them down a little bit. So they'll continue that as soon as they're able. And there's one thing, I don't know if you've noticed, if you've driven down Texas Avenue lately, right in front of the Si Miller Park and the old Police Department, there's significant erosion that's occurred there that, so we're going to have to do something else as well that once we put the project in, all these big storms, it's eroded before the vegetation could establish. So there will be something in addition coming for that, that piece there.
I will thank you for the, part of that, one little piece of that project was to take the stream crossing line, 40-year-old, one that's been right behind my house. I've now lost my waterfall, but that's okay. I'm happy it's out of there. And now hopefully, the creek will smooth itself out.
Yes, great.
And I still got three manhole covers, but that's okay.
Up next, we've got one of our 2022 Parks Bond Projects. So it's the Buckman Park, Senior and Little League Buildings. If you've not been by there lately, you can see on the pictures, but they look really, really nice, and they're getting really far along, which is fantastic. So both buildings are about 85% complete. The site is lagging behind. Again, you've heard me say it several times now, but the weather has been really difficult, unseasonably wet this summer. And so they're currently working on installing the ceilings in the buildings. They're painting the metal structures outside, so they're getting, they're getting close. And we do expect them to still be complete in August as planned. There may be some minor things, but we are working to hit the dates that we need to be completed so Little League can get back on there for their fall season.
Quick question. When, if we select and finally decide to build from the already pretty much designed building, fields at Veterans Park, senior league operations will move over there mostly? If I'm not mistaken, would that then be, you laid a little league building, senior league building. It'd really be mostly little league operations at that Buckman Park site?
So I may need to ask Parks about this. I don't think that they plan to just move over there. I think they'll use both. Is that right? I think they're going to still plan to be able to use both spaces to add additional capacity.
My understanding was what we've been telling the little league folks is that they're going to have access to more fields. Maybe those aren't the two that they'll have access to. This is a construction thing, so I don't know if I need an answer right now, but I just am always sensitive to what we have told little league people that they would have access to.
Sure, we can talk through that more and then provide more information. We will, I'll get to in a second on the other baseball fields, but we will be coming with a larger update to y'all on that soon, and we can provide some of that information then.
Thank you.
Okay, Central Park Operations Shop, again, another bond project, also slated to be completed this summer. If, again, if you go by there, the buildings are pretty substantial, and it's really neat. Like when they first went up, it's a pretty significant difference. And so the metal buildings are up. A lot of the site paving has been completed. And so right now, where as they're finishing up, should be done end of the summer, working on making sure all of the last minute items are coming in. If any furniture is needed, any other equipment and furnishings, getting those ordered. So looking to have it open and ready to go well ahead of Christmas in the park starting. Lincoln Center Area Improvements, another bond project. So this one included adding a restroom out at Lincoln Recreation Center, pedestrian improvements, and adding a shade structure out there. So that was phase one. We have two different things shown on here. So phase one, we're almost completely done with design, and so ready to go out to bid on that piece of it. The secondary piece, we're looking, we have a budget, a little bit of budget using CDBG funds to look at upgrading the splash pad area. And so we have incorporated into the design of the restroom and the shade structure to accommodate for that future, a future expansion. It completely works with what's there currently, but if we were to move forward with a splash pad upgrade and expansion, it would all accommodate future growth as well. And so that one, like I said, we're probably ready to go out to bid on that this, or to go into construction this, probably this summer, early fall. Next is Thomas Park Improvements. We brought the master plan to y'all several, several months back. And so the design team has been working on schematic design, which we should get here in about a month. They're working on, you know, the play areas. The drainage is a big piece out there. I don't know if you recall, we combined the Thomas Park Improvements Project, which was at $3 million from the bond. And then before the bond was passed, there was another pot of money that included just drainage improvements and some site accessibility, sidewalks, those types of things. So instead of trying to keep them separate, we've just combined it together, which is why you see the budget at a higher number there. And so we had two design teams. We got all the information from the first one, and then the, the design team that's currently working on the overall park is incorporating all of those components into their, into their design. As we've talked about previously, we are, we have been waiting for Lincoln to be completed, which, as I mentioned earlier, should be completed in early 2026. And then we would start work on Thomas Park. So we expect the design for the park to be done sometime this fall, early winter, go out to bid, and be ready to go to construction shortly after Lincoln is finished. And then we will quickly move into the three road projects that are over there as well that greatly need to be done, so Francis, James, and Perrier. And so our intention is to get the park started, make sure all the heavy equipment, earth moving, those types of things, drainage gets completed, and then we'll move into the roadway improvements. Texas Independence Park at Midtown, another one that we somewhat recently have brought the master plan to y'all for review. Our design team is working on that in conjunction with the construction manager at Risk. That has proved to be really beneficial, especially for a park that's so unique and has a lot of really custom type features and components, and just to help with constructability ideas, pricing exercises, those types of things. So as you know, the park is planned to include, well, there's a restroom already out there. Looking to add a restroom off of Midtown Drive as well. Trails, both for pedestrians and for a lot of bike type trails, components, bike track, pump track, those types of skills, facilities, dog park, playground to scoff and fishing in the pond. And so we're currently in design development, and then we will be looking to, to keep moving through that, through the design, and they'll continue the different pricing exercises too. Right now, the latest that we've seen from them is, we had estimated during the master plan about 20 million. We're tracking maybe a little over that, but we're working as we go through design to really kind of hone in down to that number. The project is currently in the budget and funded at $9.2 million. So there is a difference there that we need to come back to council to talk through options if it's phasing or to fund a future project.
We authored, we awarded that to Spa Glass or somebody big?
To Skanska.
That's right, Skanska. Thank you.
Yes. And one thing to note, it will be coming to y'all at the next council meeting on the 10th. If y'all recall, we originally were looking at Independence Park as that front portion. That was like 68 acres. Now we're at, we've added the additional portion on the back, where we're adding additional trails and the, and the disc golf and those types of things. Some feedback we had gotten was to add a restroom off of Midtown Drive and some parking over there. So there's some additional design work that needs to be done associated with that. And so that change order will come to y'all because that wasn't originally part of the scope when we started.
A restroom? Is that what you said?
Yes, we're looking at just a small restroom off of Midtown Drive, maybe one or two stalls, just a small one up there for people coming in, so they're not having to go all the way into the park. It's 100, about 120 acres to go all the way through.
That, I know what the cost of restrooms are by city prices. That's pretty expensive add-in.
Sure.
Okay.
And that can certainly be something that's like on a menu to consider.
There's a small parking area there, trailhead, right?
Yes, that is our intention.
I think that's a great idea. And I assume restroom, I suppose, that comes from Parks Board?
That came from, I'm trying to think where that came from. I think it came from some discussions with council. We heard some just public feedback, and then I don't remember if Parks Board said it or not, but we heard it from several different entities. And again, something that can be added or can't be, but we're planning to at least design a space for it.
Thank you.
All right, Ballfields at Veterans Park. I'm not sure if any of y'all have seen this layout yet or not, but we have started on early conceptual design for the three new baseball fields at Veterans with the championship field, as you see, if you've seen the center there. And we have also started a meeting with the Steering Committee that we had brought to council a couple of months ago, which includes members from Little League, College Station ISD, the 12, the Bucks, Parks Board, Brazos Christian, and of course, the Bombers are members of that as well. And we've also had some separate meetings with the Bombers as well to understand their specific needs. So we've had two meetings so far. This incorporates a lot of them. We still have some from our last meeting. I guess it was earlier this week that we're going to make some changes to. So you've got the three fields. The one in the center is the larger championship field, just high level. You can kind of see the items in blue off the side of that. Those are shade structures over like elevated deck seating areas, which was a request of the Bombers. But things like, we've included concessions, restrooms, locker rooms, batting cages, all of those types of things. As I mentioned earlier, we will be coming back to council relatively soon once we finalize a conceptual plan and some cost estimates with our construction manager. We'll bring it back to council for your feedback.
What is, what is your timeline for completion on that? You think we can get that done by the summer of 2027?
I think it is possible. I think we do need to move quickly. And we've been, like, we mentioned this also to the Steering Committee the other day. It's great that we already have our construction manager on board that helps expedite things. We will likely have multiple packages, maybe a site package, drainage package. There's significant drainage work needed because of where it's located in the park. And so I do think it is possible, as long as we keep moving through the process at a good pace.
Did the little roadway behind it, did that necessitate us getting some sort of shared easement with Texas A&M, or is that all on our property?
It's currently all on our property.
Wow, y'all got that squeezed in there.
And so, and the biggest thing that you'll, you'll see, some changes that we're proposing to make. It looks like on the site plan, there's an access, a secondary access point off of University, oh, I'm sorry, off of University to add that secondary parking lot in the back. We're proposing to actually shift all the fields back and move all of the parking and those components to the front, to keep it all kind of in one area for lots of reasons. But that'll be probably the biggest change you might, you might see in our next iteration.
Oh, an edit from what we're looking at here.
Yes.
And is that 32, 30, is that 32, is that a soccer field that's image that it could fit right in that area?
Yes, a flat field. We currently have it laid out just to show that a flat field for soccer, football, other sports could fit there if, if desired. Not that that would necessarily be the intent, or the lines would be painted all the time, but it could fit.
Just give us a parameter.
Yes, yes.
Is it easy to switch between one sport to another?
So, I mean, I think Parks would have to jump in on it a little bit more, but as far as the artificial turf that's out there, we've talked about that a little bit. What they typically do, if it's a baseball field, to be transitioned to a flat field, they do little markers in, so it doesn't actually have all the lines, but there's little markers out there so they can go out and paint the lines on it. You have to remove some of the mounds, those types of things, but it does take some work, but it's not, not impossible. All right, Fire Station number seven. So as you can see in the picture, the site looks a little differently than when y'all were there for, for the groundbreaking. And so as you remember, we have two different packages. And so we had the offsite utilities package, which is almost complete, where we have Dalton Road shut down for the utility connections coming through there. And so we expect actually for that roadway to be back opened here next week. And then, of course, as you see in the picture, they have started clearing the site, and so they're preparing it to start actually going under construction on the building. The next kind of impact that you'll see out there, probably in the next, I think it's the first or second week in July, we have to remove a portion of the median that's in Greens Prairie Road. And so we're going to have to close down one lane each direction. So we'll still maintain traffic both directions, but it will have a closure there so they can remove the median to allow where the fire trucks can go both directions. And we are still very much on track to be complete next fall, the fall of 2026. Foster Sidewalks, you may have seen those behind City Hall under construction. We have completed the first section. That was from Walton to Francis. So that's substantially complete and open, just maybe some minor items here and there to correct. And they're currently working on the section from Gilcrest Avenue to George Bush, and all of that should be done by September of this year. And there are some detours in place for one-way traffic to maintain safety.
Those mailboxes look great. They were in like five gallon buckets there for a while.
Yeah. That is it. I mean, I'm glad, actually, I'm glad you brought up that. That is one thing that's a challenge that I don't think people think about, is maintaining mail access and maintaining trash services pickup. There's a lot of logistics and work that our contractors and we have to do to make sure that all of that can be maintained because it's very difficult when traffic control's in place. And it doesn't look the best always. This is my last slide, but just to note, we have two completed bond projects. I know a lot of you attended the two grand openings, but the Pickle Bowl and Multi-Use Courts at Anderson opened, and Bee Creek and Central Park Tennis Courts. And both of those were completed several months ahead of schedule, which was super exciting. We were able to get all of those courts open ahead of the Memorial Day holiday. And I know Kelsey is going to share some information in her presentation about visitors that they've had at both. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or anything about other projects as well.
Let's start with Mr. Shaver.
Jennifer, thanks. That's a ton of information. You're always very good at putting it in a concise way for us. Can you go back to the Independence Park thing real quick? I just want to mention this while we've got it on our minds, and I think some of us have talked about this in the past. And since Midtown continues to be something that we're thinking about in terms of different scales of things that might be done there. I just want to, you know, we're already, we're already making the park bigger. There's that additional acreage that's being added to the west, which you indicate, and the possibility of a restroom and parking area. I still want us to think about going across Midtown to the feeder road. And there's already part of the Lit Creek Hike and Bike Trail that goes around. I realize that's an old landfill. We've talked about that, and there may be some difficulties with that. But maybe there's some simple ways to connect to the existing Lit Creek Hike and Bike Trail and come back around the other side and connect to Midtown so that we can also add signage over there potentially to talk about this park being there and create, add to that sense of place in a way that gets us to a more visible spot out on the highway. That's all I wanted to say.
Sure, thank you.
You're here.
Any other comments?
No, thank you.
Your very last project? Anderson Park, picture on the left. As one member of council, I was blown away at what we were able to accomplish out there for, I think, 1.7 or 1.9 million dollars. at what we were able to accomplish out there for, I think, 1.7 or 1.9 million dollars. Once this massive bolus of spending relative to parks is done, I'm sure it's gonna be a while before we make further investments. I would just, for future councils, I mean, we have so many green space parks. I mean, if we could pick three or four, I mean, it could really impact some neighborhoods by doing very modest but impactful improvements like this for a relatively low cost. I was just blown away. We were able to do all of that for less than 2 million bucks. So, great job.
Ms. McLennan?
Awesome job, per usual.
Any comment down here? Mr. Wright?
Can you go back to that Midtown Park? I just want to point out, because it does keep coming up, and I don't want to relitigate Midtown at this point in life, but we are looking at investing 20 million dollars into a park in Midtown for the city to use, but also for the people that live there to use the most. So I would just point that out. I know it won't eliminate some of their issues that they're seeing, but we are putting money into that neighborhood, significant money, that is not going to any other neighborhood in the city. Thank you for all that you do. It's a great job.
Ms. Smith?
Sure, you're doing a great job. This is not easy, keeping up with all that stuff, and you have all that information just seemingly ripe at the tip of your tongue. So, thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you. I do, I do want to mention, I appreciate that. I mean, I've got a really great team of project managers, land agents, inspectors, so they do a lot of, most of this hard work.
I think one thing to take away from this, although, is Mr. Yancey brought it up, the coordination of what the demands would be on that extension of Rock Prairie East given the uncertainty of where we're gonna locate public work, should we move it at all. Anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. We have one more item,
Thank you.
which is, which is a similar presentation of annual or biannual update from Ms. Hayden. This is a 7.4 presentation discussion, possible action related to Parks and Recreation Department annual update. Oh, this is an annual update? Means you only have to do it once a year? We never see you again? No, I know that's not true.
Yeah. And actually, I think the last annual update was done in late 2023, so it's been a while. But tonight, the numbers that you'll see are fiscal year '25, year-to-date, with an exception of aquatics, and I'll call that out when we get there. But, and so just to point out a few things within the Parks and Recreation Department, this year, we have hosted and will host 25 tournaments out at the Veterans Park and other parks. And estimated tourism visitors that are coming from those 25 events being held within the park system is 125,000. This week, actually, we're hosting the Seven-on-Seven State Football Tournament out at Veterans Park. We have 128 high school football teams coming out. We had a few lightning delays today, but we're hoping that the weather holds off. Back on wood. We have 17,117 email subscribers. We send out a weekly email newsletter, and we're continuing to try to grow that number. We have 72 full-time employees, and during the heat of the summer, we inflate with 198 part-time and seasonal employees. That's our camp counselors, our lifeguards, and so on. We have 56 developed parks currently, 42 miles of walking trails, and this fiscal year, we've had 4,733 facility and field rentals. We've had some really big wins this year. We have received two grants from Texas Parks and Wildlife, both of those for Texas Independence Park at Midtown. In January, we got notice that we received the local Parks Grant, which is $750,000 for Texas Independence Park at Midtown. And then just in May, we were notified that we received the recreational trails grant for just under $300,000 for Texas Independence Park at Midtown. So it's almost a little bit over a million dollars in grant funding for that property. In addition, we also were certified as a Bird City Texas. It was a huge initiative done by a lot of staff and a lot of community members, and that's a three-year certification. We're really excited to be a part of that. And then we also received the Lone Star Legacy Parks designation for Bryson Park. And, you know, the best thing about the Bird City and Legacy Park was that those were efforts that we partnered with community members to help us get those designations. And this next year, we're working towards nominating Thomas Park as another legacy park. Current projects that we are working on, I won't go into too much detail on these because a lot of them Jennifer just highlighted, but those in blue, those are bond projects that we're working on with Capital Projects. And as Jennifer mentioned, Anderson Park. We have this new software that we can use to track visitation to our park system. And so since reopening Anderson Park, we have had 7,500 visitors to the park. That's in a month, and their average time at the facility is 89 minutes. So they're coming and they're spending a lot of time there, which is really cool to see that activation. And year over year, that's a thousand percent increase in visits.
That, that's the pickleball fields.
Pickleball.
Eighty percent of that in pickleball, or is that evenly split?
I don't know where they're going. I don't know where they're going, but every time, you know, you drive by, the footsaw and the bike polos activated as well as pickleball.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Little bit of everybody.
I'll say that I stopped by there at Memorial Day. My son and I went and played some footsaws. I was like, let me just, I don't know what this is, let me go buy a ball and play it. We had a lot of fun, but pickleball was just filled. People were grilling, which I don't know if they're allowed to do, but they were out there grilling. They were just having the time of their life. And so it's amazing what investment in one park can revitalize an entire area. That was just my two cents on that.
I, I agree, and if, with Councilman Wright, 100%. And if you annualize that to 20,000 visitors, in year one, that means we only spent $95 per citizen for a year worth of entertainment at Anderson Park. I mean, that's incredible. If you could extrapolate that over four or five parks, again, a future council, you know, Sandstone Park, big, open space, nothing there, you know. Anyway, I'll hush.
Really exciting to see that activation. Some other key projects that I will point out, Summit Crossing Park is currently under construction. That's a parkland dedication, funding there. We are bringing back to you, hopefully, in the next couple of months, the Veterans Park Master Plan that we've been working on alongside Capital Projects, and also the Recreation Center feasibility study. And then I also wanted to point out, we recently finished up a system-wide conditions assessment. So going around to all of the 56 parks in our park system and looking at all the assets that we have, it took about a year to do that project, but really taking a look at improvements that need to be made to existing and aging infrastructure. And then last budget year, the council approved a Capitol revolver, so $2.5 million to reinvest into the park system. And so some of the pictures you see there, we're working on some playground replacements that will come to you for approval. We've recently purchased new trash can receptacles. So the one you see there is, you know, traditional wood, and so we're looking at upgrading those so there are less maintenance long-term, as well as the water fountains throughout the park system. So invest, reinvesting into existing infrastructure. Next, we'll go through some of our programs. So like I mentioned, the aquatic programs, these numbers are referencing last summer because we're in the heat of the summer. And so, but last summer, we hosted 1,500 swim lessons. We had 215 kiddos on the tsunami swim team. We have 66 passes sold for the Aqua Fitness Program, and public swim was at 38,000. And then we had 63 rentals across both Adamson Lagoon and the Cindy Holleran Pool. And then some new programs this year, we've introduced private swim lessons. So we've always done group lessons, but we had a request for private, and so we've introduced that. We've introduced dive-in movies, so some special events at the pool, and then a sensory swim time at Cindy Holleran Pool. For athletic programs, these are year-to-date, so fiscal year, year-to-date, so October to now, we've hosted 394 adult teams in our sports league, so that's softball, kickball, and volleyball. And then in our youth basketball league at the Lincoln Center, we've had 534 kids. And then for field allocation, we have 12 different partners. So those are Little League, College Station Youth Soccer, and a lot of our pay-to-play sports. And so, you know, to answer your question in regards to Little League using the fields, once we add on Bachman as it's renovated and the three new baseball fields, those three new fields will go into the allocation process, and so any of the groups that we work with will have access to, to be allocated to those fields. We had 27 kids in the Challenger Bowling Program, and then our tennis program continues to grow. We had 230 kids in the tennis programs, and then 157 adults sign up for those programs.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright, do we have a pickleball program?
We do not currently have a pickleball program. We do offer pickleball at the Lincoln Center, but it's open play, and then, of course, Anderson Park.
Would it be beneficial to have a pickleball program?
Something we could certainly look into, yes.
If the pickleball community needed a more of a league kind of system, they'd have to be cooperative, but right now, it's just fun.
Yeah.
It is, and I think there's also a lot of people out there who want to learn how to play pickleball. It can be intimidating, your first time going out there. There's a lot of rules, and so possibly like an intro could be. Over at the Lincoln Center, we had 258 kids participate in our after-school program, and we currently have 259 kids enrolled in the summer camp program with an average daily attendance of 180 kids coming to that program. The adult membership count, we have 125, and so those are individuals who come in to use the facility, whether it's open gym or zumba classes or the weight room that we have on-site. And then some key events that I wanted to point out, this year, we did a Girls in STEM program, which was really cool. We had 60 kids come out to that. Of course, our Keeping the Dream Alive Celebration for Dr. Martin Luther King, we had 250 people at. And then to kick off the new year, they did a program called Fit Fest where we had 50 people come out and get the new year started with some exercise. Our senior services program continues to be something that everybody likes. The membership is $27 annually to join. We currently have 389 passholders, and they've scanned their passes into one of the facilities 11,834 times. And monthly, we offer 228 programs across those three centers. So there is always something to do.
Didn't we have some senior programs over at Pebble Creek Country Club? Didn't we have some senior programs there? Do we, are you offering anything over there?
Not that I'm aware of since I've been here, maybe in the past.
Okay.
But, not currently. And then we also hosted 16 special events, and those are free to encourage people to come in. You don't have to have a membership to come to those events, but again, trying to encourage people to come out. Cemeteries, we do also operate both of the city's municipal cemeteries, the Historic College Station Cemetery, and then the Memorial Cemetery that houses the Aggie Field of Honor. Our year-to-date sales is $397,000. We've had 132 internments, and we've sold 119 plots and 68 columbarium niches. For community events, I referenced these with the Wolfpen Creek presentation that we did earlier. But the one thing that wasn't on there is Christmas in the park. In this last year, we had about 8,000 attendees. It was really cold and wet both days. So attendance wasn't that light, but it was a little light due to weather.
Could you speak to, briefly, on Food Truck Wednesdays? I know that's a pretty regular, and I've, I talk about it periodically on the radio, but I haven't been there. Is that, I guess it depends if the market is not there, the food truck people are just gonna say it's not worth it. However, it seems to continue. Are we subsidizing that?
We are not subsidizing it, but we aren't making the food truck vendors pay a fee. So they come out, of course, they have to have their health permit. It was slow, like I mentioned, last year, this last, in 2024, in 2025, we saw a really big increase in participation. We have almost 200 people coming out every night. I went to a few of them and talked to the food truck vendors, and they all said they were having great success. We programmed the food truck vendors to come out, and so we're really selective in making sure that we only have two, you know, savory providers and then one dessert, so that there's enough to go around. But we've had really good success this last spring, and so it's not happening anymore. It's in the spring, twice a month on Wednesdays.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then our conservation outreach events, this is something we're really proud of, the growth that we've had over the last year. So these are events that have been held out at the Gary Halter Nature Center. And we hosted a star party with 594 attendants, a Monarch March in March with 553 attendees. And then, of course, our Park in the Dark, where you can actually camp in a park. Any other time, you cannot camp in the park, but on Park in the Dark at Lake Creek, we have families come out and camp in the parks. And then our summer camp attendees, we have 189 kids signed up for those nature conservation summer camps. And then the Cooling College Station Plan, the Parks Department has implemented the first part of that, which was the Residential Tree Program this last fall. We gave out almost 1,500 trees. A thousand of those were small seedlings. At Christmas in the park, we did the lolly, lob lolly pines, so tied to Christmas. And then we did the native tree giveaway out at Veterans Park in December, where we gave away 1,003-gallon trees and 450 15-gallon trees. The budget for this was the 450 15-gallon trees, but we bought them from Trees for Houston, which is a nonprofit, and they donated the other seedlings and the 1-gallon trees. So we were able to really get more trees out. We are also currently working on the planting of trees within the park system as a part of the Cooling College Station Plan. And we're working on the RFP right now, and hopefully should bring that back to you all this fall to implement the planting across 11 different parks in the park system. We are also working on updating our master plan for the Parks Department. The plan that we have currently was 2010 through 2020, so it has been expired since COVID. But we do, we are working on a five-year update. We're currently in the community engagement phase of that, and we're taking a little bit of a different approach with pop-up community engagement. We've had a lot of surveys recently and a lot of other plans being updated, and so we are meeting people where they're at. So we're going out to swim lessons, we're going out to the pools, we're gonna work to set up something at the library, and really trying to engage the community where they are currently to get that engagement. And so we're in that phase, and we'll start to bring that in front of you as we get closer to finishing that update. We also are about to host Games of Texas, so this is a really big event. It's happening at the end of July. We anticipate 12,000 athletes and their families to be in town for this event. We are partnering with the City of Bryan and the University on this. And this is my last slide, and so next week, we are hosting the Second Annual I Heart America Celebration at Wolfpen. And that'll be Friday, July 4th. We'll have a concert with Infinite Journey, which is a Journey tribute band, and then fireworks at 9:30. This year, we're really excited. We have a sponsor, two sponsors, monetary sponsors, presenting sponsors, Xfinity, where we've gotten a $10,000 sponsorship from them, and then independent sponsor from HEB for $5,000. And of course, working with the College Station Noon Lions Club to have family events, watermelon and sausage. So, that is my last slide. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the annual update. Maybe it'll be annual in the future, very interesting. Any comments? Let me start with Mr. Schaefer again, any comments?
I would just say thank you, Kelsey. You know, I think having been a member of this community for a long time, I've always felt like we've done a good job with Parks and Recreation, and that goes back to other councils and other management, et cetera. I know you've been here a short time, but I would like to compliment you on what you've done since you've been here. And I think the places, the spaces, the programs that we have are excellent. They really add a lot to this community. They make us, they help make us a desirable place for people to be, to move to, to raise kids, to enjoy these amenities. It's a really important part of life, and I think, I think we do a good job of that. And I also am pleased that, one of the things I've seen, and I think in your tenure, it certainly has accelerated some, is the addition of more trails. And that if you look at surveys, and you know this, and maybe some others do too, is if you look at survey work that people do and they look at assessments for recreation throughout Texas and across the nation, trails are the number one thing that people ask about because people use them daily for a variety of things. And so I'm just glad that we're doing that better and better all the time. Thanks.
Ditto.
McLennan?
Of all of the services that the city offers, there's not one that I'm not impressed with. But our Parks Department, I would put it up against anyone in the whole, any city in the whole country, and I'm pretty sure we would stack up incredibly. We use the parks in my family on a weekly, if not daily basis. We're very regular users of Thomas Park. We were at Adamson Lagoon this past Saturday for a, 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 a party. And the staff is incredible, the facilities are incredible, and the city's commitment, long term commitment to parks really shows. And I'm glad that we've had a series of parks directors culminating in yourself that have really lived and breathed the quality of life of our citizens into reality. So just thank you for all that you and your staff do.
Mr. Wright?
Kelsey, I can't tell you how excited I am about this. I, I, if I had my, my crystal ball, I'd have you do a monthly report. So I mean, this is College Station, this is what we are. Look what all you're offering to our community. It is amazing. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. You are doing fabulous things. I only have one question for you, and that is, are we reaching out to the YMCA? I actually went to a YMCA event today. Are we partnering with them on any of our kids' camps? They're currently doing a camp, and I know y'all are doing summer camps. Are we partnering with them or be thinking about partnering with them?
We, so we are, I wouldn't necessarily say partnering with them, but we have worked with them as they've established their existing summer camp right next to Wolfpen. And so we've worked with them to give them access to the Wolfpen Park for their summer camp program. And so we're in communication. And pretty regularly are communicating back and forth with their leadership.
They just, they just hired a new director.
Yes.
Just recently. I think they would be very open to, to working maybe in the next summer. I know they're just kind of getting off the ground right now, but thank you for working with them. Great job. Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
I don't really have anything to add. I'll do everything else. I'll just say that it's nice when we get these nice annual updates. As the city grows, I think, I think every department has a step of their game and parks included, and it's just really impressive what we can do to service a city of our size, rapidly growing, very efficiently, and it's very well run. And I'm excited. Can't wait to hear the Journey cover band. I'm very excited about that, so that'll be fun.
And Mr. Smith?
Sure, Kelsey. Thank you for your work. In particular, I want to say thank you and please continue the reinvestment in the existing parks. We have a lot of great facilities and the new stuff is great, but the existing parks, like my neighborhood park, I go to sit many times a week. And it's nice to have those facilities and it's nice to have them maintained. It's had, nice to have them in good condition. And so thank you so much for that, paying attention to that, and I will echo the trails. I'm a trails lover. It's a good thing to do and I'm also a participant in the senior center and it's a good thing too. So I haven't seen anything bad. It's great. Thank you.
Okay, well, let me wrap this up and echo all of the plaudits that you justly deserved, your staff. I think the, going beyond the infrastructure issues which consume a lot of your time, it's the creative talent of you and your staff in bringing more experiential opportunities. More stuff, more things to do and more organized things to do where organization is needed. I think I've seen it tick up two or three notches in that since you've been here, and I think that reflects on you and the staff you have selected and hired and brought in on the recreation side, not just the park side. I don't want to leave on a downer note, but I will, will just touch on one thing we discussed earlier today. I guess this afternoon, early evening, you are one of the clients of the mowing contract. So you'll be in a good position to help Mr. Kaler and Public Works make a decision about while we're receiving the quality of services that we expect. So I, I know, I know your high standards and I know you will not be reticent to point out. Areas that need to be touched on, a new company coming in will need some guidance and, and will need some, some encouragement, shall I put it in a good term? From the city, city department clients that are helping to pay the bill because it's, it's spread out across a number of different departments. And I know you're one of the bigger users of that, so I know that the, that the competition fields are taken care of by your crew, but a lot of the just neighborhood parks are under that contract. So I encourage you to do what you would normally do and don't be quiet if you see some things that need to be done in that area.
That, and that also falls under Mr. Steven Richardson, who has very high expectations, so I know he'll definitely keep an eye on that.
That's true. You, you just have to listen to Steve, Steven, and he'll bring it to you and you will together resolve that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I also just want to mention our staff in Parks and Rec. You know, maybe it's a new metric that we need to be tracking, but our leadership team across the leadership team has over fifty years of experience within the Parks Department. So we have a really passionate, dedicated team and it, you know, it's not just me. I've only been here eighteen months, but really getting them, just saying yes and getting out of the way. Because we have a really, really solid parks team. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll look forward to your next appearance, which I'm sure will not be the annual, the annual update. It'll be something very specific. Okay, we're going to move on to the regular agenda, assuming that nobody here needs to adjourn for any other reason. If you need to, just step out for a minute. We'll continue because we're almost at the end. And I thank those that are involved in item eight point one of the regular agenda for setting through the rest of this presentation. I'm going to read this item eight point one for the record. Public hearing, presentation, discussion, possible action regarding ordinance. Amending Appendix A U D O Article Four Zoning Districts, Section four point two Official Zoning Map of the Code of Ordinances. City College Station, Texas, by charging, changing the zoning district boundary from our rural to CI Commercial Industrial. For approximately nineteen point three three acres at twenty eight fifty five Graham Road North. Generally located at the intersection of Graham Road North and Old Welburn Road. Becca Blazengame, I think this may be one of your first presentations.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. Becca Blazengame, Staff Planner at Planning and Development Services. As mentioned, item eight point one is a public hearing, presentation, discussion and possible action. For rezoning at two eight five five Graham Road North, requesting a change of the existing zoning district of our rural to CI Commercial Industrial. This zoning application is for approximately nineteen point three three acres of a, approximately of, out of a hundred and sixty six acres. Generally located at the intersection of Graham Road North and Old Welburn Road. The applicant intends to develop the property as a commercial amusement consisting of golf driving range and other entertainment such as outdoor games and snacks. The future land use of the property is currently business center, which is designated for the following areas that include office, research or industrial uses that may planned and developed as a unified project. Generally, these areas need convenient access to interior roadways. It's also designed to accommodate a large variety. Excuse me, a variety of large footprint buildings and commercial and services within business centers. To accommodate pedestrian, bicycle, transit connectivity to and within business centers. And provide buffering through landscaping and building placement where large scale employment sites are adjacent to residential areas. The zoning districts that are commercially appropriate, excuse me, not commercially, generally appropriate for a business center include business park, industrial and commercial industrial zoning, which is the, what the applicant is looking to rezonate tonight. The existing zoning district is our rural, which is not consistent with the future land use. The designated zoning district of Commercial Industrial, CI, does align with the existing future land use of Business Center. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning request as it is in line, again, with the comprehensive plan. This application was presented to Planning and Zoning Commission on June fifth. They recommended approval unanimously. I received one call in opposition, one inquiry, and I'm also available for questions as is the applicant.
Thank you very much. That's the presentation before we open the public hearing. Does any council member have a question for staff? Yes, Ms. MacLeeny?
Did you say you received one call in opposition?
Yes, ma'am.
And what was the specific concern?
The resident, most, very much directly south to development was concerned with lighting and drainage mainly for the site. I did inform her that this is currently just the rezoning application. This will still have to go through preliminary plan, final plan and site plan approval. With those, they will have to meet all lighting requirements and also drainage requirements of the city.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor.
Yes, oh, question here. Mr. Wright?
I guess they, they really wouldn't have access off of Welburn.
No, sir.
It'd be off of, so the only way to really get to this site would be off of Old Welburn in front of, right there.
Correct. They actually have no actual access to FM twenty one fifty four Welburn Road at all. Further down, I think I actually slide that better. This shows our thoroughfare plan. At the intersection of Welburn Road and Rock Prairie Road West, you can travel further down. There is a U-turn available more appropriately at General Parkway. Where you can then use that to access Old Welburn Road. You can still move forward and use other pathways to access it through the Graham Road North. But the actual, essentially access to the property would be from Grand Road North, not from Old Welburn Road. I believe actually Old Welburn Road kind of actually stops at that intersection.
Yeah, interesting. Okay. I guess they're well aware of that too. That just, I mean, it, I like the idea and I like the location of an opposition. It would just be, if it's really successful, which I hope it is. That's an interesting pathway to get to that.
And we also are currently with the thoroughfare plan, are planning that yellow line that will extend General Parkway down whenever it does come into development. It doesn't, will be determined if it will be development. It doesn't look like to be in this development boundaries, but whenever this land that contains that road comes into development, it will be required for development at that time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a zoning change. It requires a public hearing. I note that Mr. Metcalf and the developers are both here. Are you here to present or to just answer questions? Answer questions? Okay. Well, I'll open the public hearing to see if there's any one that wishes to speak other than the availability of the engineer and the developers. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, but is there any, any need to hear from the engineer or developers or not? I do not see any, any need for that. So we will proceed. I'll open and close the public hearing. Nobody has signed up to speak. I thank the applicant and the engineer for their patience with us this evening. And, and staying with us for the duration. If there are no questions, if anyone wishes to make a motion regarding approval of this item, please signify they will.
Move approval.
Wow.
Second, third.
I think I give this one to Ms. MacLeeny, a second to Mr. Yancey. A motion to approve, as I understand it, and a second. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, it's.
No, okay.
Good to go.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We wish you good luck on the project and we're excited about you bringing another experiential opportunity to the city as well. Okay, we have item eight point two. Mr. Falco is presenting this. Presentation, discussion and possible action on a settlement agreement regarding Texas A and M University System versus Brazz Valley Groundwater, Groundwater Conservation District at all. Cause number twenty four zero zero two six two six dash C V dash four seven two in the forty, four hundred and seventy second District Court, Brazos County, Texas. I think, Mr. Falco, are you going to just give us a very brief overview of the settlement agreement? And then we will have any comments or discussion as needed and, and take a vote.
Yeah, mayor, thanks. Just a little kind of background on what the city encountered with this. So back in twenty twenty three, Upwell Brazos Valley Forum had a permit to export fifty thousand acre feet of water outside of the district in twenty twenty three. So in twenty twenty four, Upwell, they applied for an additional fifty thousand of acre foot to transport outside of the district. So that's when the city decided to protest in this matter. So under current law, most likely Upwell would be able to export that amount of water outside of our groundwater conservation district. With no limitations up to around eighty thousand acre feet of water. So based on the district's modeling, at this level of pumping, this would cause the city, College Station, to have to curtail our pumping. So slow down on our pumping of water for our residents, beginning around in twenty twenty thirty five. So that's a lot sooner than what the city would anticipate, so would have to cause us to make a lot of changes to our system. So the litigation would most likely just kind of delay this export project. And probably would most likely not change the outcome. So what the settlement agreement provides for the city, provides an outcome to this matter, provides peace of mind and a settlement to this cause. So what the city gets with this settlement is a cap on the fifty thousand acre foot of water export. So that water is capped, and that's half of what Upwell had asked for in the beginning. So what it also does is it imposes a ramp schedule to their pumping. So on their production, they're, have a ramp schedule of twenty three thousand acre feet of water until twenty thirty four. Then that goes to thirty eight thousand acre feet of water, or thirty eight thousand acre feet of water until twenty thirty nine, and then fifty thousand acre feet after that. So we would have not have gotten this without the city stepping in and protesting the matter. So another thing that the settlement provides for the city is that it provides that the export project is subject to the same curtailment rules as College Station. So that means that they would have to curtail their production at the same rates we would if that time comes. Another thing that the settlement agreement provides is that Upwell will pay more than a hundred and eighty million dollars in export fees over the thirty year term. And this will be used to mitigate our wells in the Sims Borough in the district. So that includes our nine existing wells. So another last thing that the settlement agreement provides is that the groundwater conservation district will mitigate our wells based on the impact of Upwell's export project. Based on their pumping, but at the amount of thirty percent. And if the city can show more than, a greater impact, then we can get more mitigation out of that. So tonight, before y'all, the settlement agreement would dispose of all the claims in the lawsuit between the parties. And bring this matter to an end for the city and, and provide some long term planning that we can do as a city for our, our water production.
Thank you, Mr. Falco. There is a, an item on our agenda to consider that settlement agreement. If anyone wishes to ask a question, that's fine, or we can have a motion on the floor and, and if anyone wishes to.
A move approval?
A motion from Mr. Smith, a second from Mr. Wright to approve the agreement as listed and, and as just previously described and is listed in item eight point two in our regular agenda. Do you wish to say anything to your motion?
Just Attorney Falco did a good job of explaining the overview. This was a situation where Texas water law allows that exporting to go on. I know there are a lot of local folks who wonder, why is this happening? Why is someone coming to town and taking our water and selling it somewhere? It's like, just, that's how it is. That, that can happen. We have water rights that allow us to provide water to our customers as well. And our opposing this and working with our groundwater conservation district to work on this settlement was the best possible outcome that we could get. And the fact that we got a cap and we, they're paying an export fee, which will help pay for the mitigation of the impact of their drilling. These are, these are all good things. These are great outcomes.
Thank you very much. If there isn't any need for further comment, I'll call a question and ask a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, approval of this agreement, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously, seven zero. The agreement is approved and I believe that I have to sign off and the city manager signs off. We'll get that done. Right after this meeting. Okay, so we have completed our regular agenda, workshop agenda, consent agenda, and we move to item nine. Items of community interest in council calendar. Anyone wish to comment, bring us up to date on anything in the community? Seeing none, I had a couple in mind, but I've totally forgotten them and it, after nine o'clock anyway. Item ten, council reports on committees, boards and commissions. We are reminded that our next meeting, the tenth of, the tenth. We are reminded that our next meeting, the tenth of, the tenth of July, we will be hearing from the external requesters for budgeted items, both regular funding and hot funding. So we'll hear that next week, but some of us serve on some of those boards and committees and commissions. Anyone have an update they wish to make? Nope, seeing none, seeing none this way. Very good. We'll move to item eleven, which is future agenda items. Anyone have a future agenda item they wish to bring forward? Mr. White?
Thank you, mayor. Oh, councilman, I, I brought to your attention at our last meeting, Chapter Ten, Article Two of our ordinances, which deal with cemeteries, and the, the, the not allowing of pets being part of that. We had a citizen who came and, and had some public testimony at our last meeting. I'm just asking, I'm not saying we support this, but I'm just asking for your consideration to bring this ordinance up for discussion at a future agenda.
I'm asking Mr. Attorney Adam Falco, can you give me a short statement on what the state law is that's applicable to our municipal cemeteries regarding this question?
Right, so we have municipal ordinances that govern our cemetery, which is a municipal cemetery that are set apart for human remains. In the Health and Safety Code, that governs cemeteries, there are perpetual care cemeteries and municipal cemeteries. Both of those sections, which we fall under municipal cemeteries, speak of those being set aside for human remains. So I, I think that state law binds us to human remains, and I know that there was a bill in this past session that I don't think made it out of one of the chambers, that talked about allowing animal remains or pet remains into cemeteries. That bill was bracketed for perpetual care cemeteries and not for municipal cemeteries. So I think looking kind of at legislative intent on that would show that by the legislature proposing a bill to allow something and then giving that discretion to the perpetual care cemeteries for something like animal remains, I think kind of further clarifies that the intent of the legislature is to have those cemeteries set aside for human remains. So I think our ordinance follows current state law, and I believe that's where our ordinance is written.
Thank you very much. I, I believe that, given that this is already a matter settled, state regulation, if we're in, in conformance with that, any change we would make regarding the, the citizen's request, which I, I'm sympathetic to the citizen, I don't believe that we should spend staff time to, or council time to further evaluate that based on the request she's made, because it's already against the law statewide, and, and we shouldn't be changing our ordinance to differ from what settled state law is. So I'm opposed to that. I understand, and thank you for bringing it forward on behalf of that citizen, but I will ask the council if they agree with, if anyone, anyone who wishes. See, how do I do it? Those that are opposed to putting this on a future agenda, please raise your hand. Four. Did Schaefer, did you raise your hand? One, two, three, four, that would like to put it on a future agenda? One, two. Okay, I, I think you have an answer. I don't think we'll put it on a future agenda item, but again, I, I know that city staff has already spoken to the citizen, explained what the circumstances are, and I, I hope that they will work together to encourage her to find an appropriate way to honor her mother, and I think that'll be, be possible. All right, having, is there any other future agenda item? Seeing none? My goodness, we're ready to adjourn, and this meeting is adjourned.